Hello, good day.
All right, just wanted to welcome you to our city council meeting and joint suspicion agency meeting tonight. We'll go ahead and start with the roll call. Bernie, if you could take the call, please.
Mayor Alvez Velazquez. Mayor Phil Tam. Vice Chair Ben Coman Junior.
Here. Did hear the mayor. She did.
She didn't say she's here.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernando Ceballos.
Here.
All right, and for the public's information, the mayor is out of state in North Carolina tonight, so I'll be running the meeting for her in her absence. So, bear with me. It's been a while. We're going to go ahead and move into public comment section for post session. Right now, for the public to anybody want to comment on the five items that we do have for post session. One being sale exchange of leased property at the Bluff downtown memorial park. The other being sale exchange lease of property at the public park between Highway 146 and Santa Lucia. The third one is sale exchange lease of property at 540 Galvilon Drive. Fourth one, sale exchange lease of property located at 36070 Oro Seco Road. And the last one will be personnel matters pursuant to government code 549571 City Manager. So at this time, anybody here in the chamber would like to make a comment on any of those post session. Now it's time to do so. Seeing there's no one in the chamber, we'll take it out to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom? There are none. So with that, then we'll go ahead and take you to close session. We'll adjourn at 6:30. Thank you.
We're back from closed session, our closed session report.
Mike, did you do that for us? Sure. We actually we had the same closed session report for items number one, two, three and four, which were all real property negotiation matters in each case. The council conferred with the city's negotiator, discussed the matters and the properties that are listed and provided direction and no other reportable action was taken on any of those four items. And then with respect to item number five, the council decided to defer the city manager evaluation until the January meeting, I think it's the 17th or the 11th, I can't remember one or the other, so that we have the full council present for that evaluation. And no other reportable action.
All right, thank you. All right, this time we'll go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance if everyone can stand, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the colored wishes advanced, one vision under God, indivisible, reliving human life forever.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move into public comment at this time. Public comment again is for only items not on the agenda. Any member of the public may address the council, I am not appearing on the agenda. Items of interest to the public are within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comments should not, should be filled out. And the speaker has three minutes to say what, want to say as long as not on the agenda. And we keep it directed towards the council itself, but not individually. Again, please be brief and to the point, you'll have three minutes, no action, discussion will be taken on the item not appearing on the agenda. So at this time in chamber, is there ready anybody?
This public comment was received in my
This public comment was received in my email by a monotonous person. I am a resident of Solidad raising a concern over a Facebook group run by a council member and her husband. The Front Street Facebook group, although legal, should not be something that the city of Solidad partners with. The administrators of that Facebook group are biased and do not allow dissenting opinions posted on the page. Frank Corlejo also direct messages those who, those with dissenting opinions, making accusations that are unfounded, spreads misinformation and attacks the personal character of those with dissenting opinions. I am asking the city to reconsider utilizing their front street platform or official city business. Thank you. That's it.
That's it. All right. That's one written communication, any other? You'd like to make a public comment in the chamber?
Yes, I was just wondering if you have considered filling that lake diff that is located off of Monterey Street and I believe Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's because it's pretty big and I think it should be, you know, in duty.
Anyone else in the chamber? If not, we'll take it out to Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm coming up for recording. Wes Wyatt, Slayes, Warner County Home Machine, just checking in about homeless issues in general. And trying to push forward housing first, maybe providing people services if you know that they're already signed up for cars, HMIS. For housing and can't get it at this point, then how do we take care of them in Israel? It might be temporarily permanent even for years. But we could provide, you know, running water, electricity, water bodies, showers, and dumpsters, you know, to certain places, sanctioning cabin, I suppose, you know? And if they, if, if that place is full, then what about everyone else? You know, I mean, it's just people are too poor to afford rent and that's kind of what situation they're in. And there's no point in making any more state created danger by just driving away and taking everything they have. So it's just a housing, housing first approach, you know, and providing services as soon as we so.
Thank you. Very quickly, and I missed it, we also have translation on, on Zoom, so we have that as well, and inside the chamber here, we have those, those items there, here, headsets for, for translation as well. So if anybody need those, feel free to access them.
Yeah, so Chair, we also have Jesus who's here who can translate for anyone in person.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jesus. Any Zoom? Seeing none, all right, we'll go ahead and move into council presentations. At this time, a confirmation of the city council in celebration of tenth anniversary of Pinnacle National Park. Councilmember Cabrera, would you like to go ahead and do that? Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody here from? Oh, excellent, we do. Please come on, the body. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jesus Cole, I'm Pinnacle National Park Committee volunteer ambassador. It's been a pleasure working with you guys for our tenth anniversary celebration. To very honor be present as the solid member raised here, I'm very happy to be working with everyone here on this project and our proclamation. So thank you so much.
Yeah, could you please? Yeah, my honor, actually. So there's a proclamation in celebration of the tenth anniversary of the Pinnacles National Park, where as Pinnacles National Park have the rich history of local support and initiative, with local ranchers and residents playing a crucial role in its establishment and development. Since its establishment as a national monument in nineteen oh eight to its designation as a national park in twenty thirteen, the support of Solidad locals has been instrumental in the success of the park. Whereas the west side of Pinnacles has been a particular focus, a local initiative, with Solidad residents playing a key role in its development over the years. From the nineteen sixty-four meeting between the Solidad Chamber of Commerce President and the Park Services Chief of Planning, that helped spur the paving of the road from Solidad to the west side, to the twenty thirteen establishment of the West Side Visitors Contact Station, that the potent enthusiasm of Solidad locals have helped to shape the park. Whereas Pinnacles National Park is a true wonder located in the Gabalin Mountains between the Salinas Valley on the west and Bear Valley on the east. Its unique values and attractions draw tourists from all over the world, and its status as a national park is a testament to its importance and beauty. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Solidad celebrate the tenth anniversary of Pinnacles as a national park. We must also recognize the continued stewardship and preservation efforts of both the park and its gateway communities. The dedication and support of local residents have been crucial in maintaining the park's natural beauty and ensuring that it remains a cherished national treasure for generations to come.
All right. Any comments? Any comments? Mayor of Laker?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Chair, I just want to say congratulations. I know obviously for me, Pinnacles has a really special place in my heart. I've been going there since I was, you know, since I was a little girl. That's where my parents used to take us, so I know it's obviously a gem in our backyard and there's been so much, you know, throughout the years that Pinnacle has offered, and I think there's a lot of continued partnerships that we have as well, that, that we can foster to make sure that our, especially our families, our residents that have not been at the park, to have the opportunity to really look at all of the amazing, just geological formations and wildlife that exist just in our backyard. But I also want to, so thank you so much, we're really excited about the, the future partnerships that we have with Pinnacles National Park, and also want to remind our community that there is a celebration that's happening this Saturday that is also in partnership with a historical society. So it gives our, our residents an opportunity to come out and learn more about the park and its services. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, again, this is real exciting for me. I had the pleasure of working with Blanca Starsky, who is, I believe, the director or superintendent out at Pinnacles. And she's really made a big effort to bring the park to us. You know, we have it nearby, sometimes I feel, you know, that some may take it for granted or are not aware, you know, of everything that, that is at the park. And so she's really made an effort to bridge the gap between our city of Solidad and, and the park. And she's done that by trying to bring more programs to our school. I remember as a kid going and then it stopped, I don't think any of my children got to go during school. So she's really made an effort to do that. Also to hire more people from Solidad before, we didn't really have a lot of Solidad people working there. We had people out of state even working there, so I really want to applaud her for those efforts as well. And also something that, that some may not be aware is that Blanca has also tried to get more bilingual people to work at the park and, and more bring more internships, some are paid internships, some come with housing. So, you know, I just really am excited to see this and also just to echo the mayor's words, wanted to invite everybody to their tenth anniversary. It's going to be at the Solidad Historical Society Museum. And I believe it's this Saturday from ten AM to one PM, and there's going to be activities for people of all ages. I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Yeah, and I also just like to add quickly, as I was up there, the day after Thanksgiving with my grandchildren, so I, they hadn't been up there yet. So I wanted to take them up there, I couldn't get in, two and a half hour wait, the, the parking was closed. The ranger said, ah, sorry, you have to come back next day or during the week when it's a little bit slower. And just, it's a testament to, to what a jewel that is in our valley. I mean, we have beautiful pedal beach here, but we have the gorgeous Pinnacles in our backyard, so we're so blessed. And thank you for the stewards of taking care of that, 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 you know, property and ensuring that it's a, you know, a really nice place to visit. So thank you, congratulations. All right. Oh, and we're gonna take a two minute break and take a quick picture with the flag and. Right, well, thank you and for your patience, and we're back. And now we'll move into council presentation. I've had a request council that, that we move item two up to the first one, any objections? All right, so let's have Ariana Mora. Come on, or excuse me, yeah, I had to go to number two. Our associate. Our assistant. Yeah, I'm looking to you.
Thank you, hi, good afternoon. Ariana was supposed to fire with the Solida. We'll also have code and threat in our police department part of this presentation as well. So we'll start it quickly with this presentation on food trucks and then regarding implementation and enforcement of these items. Something brief wants to discuss, so the overview for food trucks regarding state and local mandates, some questions to take into consideration, or what are the requirements, what is, what is not allowed, or at least clarify or find those clarifying points of what's allowed? How are these food trucks enforced here in Solida and providing recommendations to city, to city council and get council direction to prepare something to enforce? Really quickly, these are the requirements at the state and federal level, and also what is required in Solida. The food California retail food code, they need their own certificate to handle food products, commercial modular insignia from HCD to conform with their own requirements. They have to file with the Secretary of the State, income taxes with federal treasury bureau, and also get their seller's permit from the California Department, from state, also federal ID employer number, which is needed for all employers participating in food trucks. Regarding Solida, we are required to get a business license, maybe also look into zoning in the use permits regarding location, fictitious business name, health permit inspection, and also insurance, whether it's the insurance for the whole modular unit itself, and also maybe liability insurance given the public location. So something to look into, what we currently have in our code is under chapter five forty, something to clarify that although it may, you may assume that no food trucks are not allowed within public streets or public place in the city, it's important to clarify that the code in fact states that no transient vendor has exclusive right to use or occupy a public space. So we want to make sure that that's clear when we're enforcing mobile food trucks. And while staff is reading that ordinance, we, we think we can gather more verbiage and make it more clear specifically pertaining to food truck. So our municipal code also has a sidewalk vendor ordinance, which is very similar to transient vendors. Transient vendors are those that are roaming around the city. Sidewalk vendors can be also stationary and within the public right of way. When it comes to food trucks, our transient vendor ordinance is not clear. What regulation pertains to mobile food trucks, therefore, one of the staff recommendations is to create a new or new provisions within that chapter that only specify for food trucks regarding location and other items that we'll be discussing further in this presentation. But again, currently, as mentioned in the code, it pretty much prevents a vendor to claim rights to a public space. The next slide, I'll go ahead and leave it to Carter first.
Evening. So some of the issues I've come across when I'm out there, it just makes it really hard for me to force it because sometimes, you know, you know, there's only certain things I can do if it's not on the municipal code. There ain't really much, you know, much I can do to enforce. But vendors are normally checked twice a year. We always want to check, you know, for our business license, make sure they have their health permits, stuff like that. Business license renewals are also provided by our finance department. And basically I go off of that, if whatever businesses are out of compliance, I'll go out there and I'll check them and I shut them down. If there's any other issues, and we basically forward them to city hall to, to address the issue. Again, I already mentioned our Solida municipal section, one oh four zero three zero defines all penalties unless, let's see, or infractions. The first line on that is basically a hundred, the second fine is two hundred, and the third fine is five hundred. Some of these vendors actually make more than, and, but they, they actually get more out there when people, excuse me, when they're making a business. So I think we need to up our fees and have something in writing that at least will give me more concrete, you know, ground for me to enforce and stuff when I'm out there doing my job. Of course, we always check for, you know, all the rest of the, you know, ordinances and stuff, make sure they're in compliance.
Thank you.
So right now we have seven active, active food trucks from our business license registry as we have. It's a brief map, I know, unfortunately, I wasn't able to put it on, on the council presentation, but this is a brief map of where those food trucks are located in Solida. So that's our registry for these food trucks here. Ideas for the future, for future considerations in council discussion. I've mentioned one of the ideas is to bring new provisions on the food truck under chapter five point forty. Again, this will identify specific locations to prohibit food trucks from specific locations within Solida, one of them being out of the downtown specific plan area, which they're currently not allowed. That specific plan area runs from Front Street to Monterey Street. So that area, those streets, that's where currently those food trucks aren't able to be. Consider on-street regulations for parking time limits. I know that's something that is currently unclear within our municipal code that we, that we can look into and with, by council direction to get a better idea of enforcement. And then another idea is to create a new food truck license. Right now, food trucks do get a peddler's license, which is around two hundred and seventy-six dollars. So creating a new food truck license.
I wanted to make sure I was here. So thank you, I do. And thank you for bringing this back. I think I have several questions. I know obviously Mayor Protam has brought this concern back and thank you for providing us information. One of my, my requests in the past has been, and I didn't see it on this slide, is what are the current infractions and current violations that we've had within the last, you know, year or two? We only have seven food trucks. I, you know, I, I get it, it's seven food trucks, but, but it's not, I mean, for me, it's not a significant amount of food trucks that we have. But I want to make sure that I'm able to understand, because I haven't heard it. I'm sure maybe other council members have. But I want to better understand what are the, I know, you know, our officer talked about some of the infractions. He can't do anything because if they're not in our municipal code. So I just need to understand what are those infractions? What is happening? What are the violations? What are the concerns that have been documented or complaints that we've had in regards to that? And then I think for me, obviously, there's a larger discussion, but my recommendation would be to create an ad hoc subcommittee to bring it back. I did a quick research on the city of Salinas. They have a specific food truck. You know, ordinance that is very comprehensive, that has a lot more that we don't have. And then the city of Greenfield also, I looked at theirs and they have an operation guide that goes along with their food truck ordinance that, you know, talks about the outreach piece, right? What's going to happen? So I think those were really good ones that I looked at. I didn't have, you know, I wanted to research a few more, but I think those gave me a better understanding of what we have, what, what we don't, what we need. Obviously, there's missing pieces. But I also want to make sure, as Ariana mentioned, is feedback from the community and the businesses, right? How do we work together? Obviously, we want to support our brick and mortar businesses, but I do want to say, you know, for the record, that the city has been really supportive of our brick and mortar businesses. I mean, I think we've heard the last couple of meetings, how much CDBG money has been expended to be able to support our businesses. We do have an economic development department now. We do have a Baharo CDC. You know, there's another item on the agenda to be able to support our businesses tonight as well. So I just want to be careful on that end because I think we are supporting our businesses. I just want to know what is it that our businesses are needing, that we are not providing with also the understanding that the food trucks are legal. So, I mean, I want to make that clear that our residents understand that it's not an illegal activity, that it is legal. But, but we can look at parameters. And I think that's where, where I'm at in terms of my comments for this item.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, council?
First of all, I just want to thank Ariana and Philip for, for that presentation. Thank you. I think for me, I, I really, in working with businesses throughout, I really feel that the food trucks, to me, are maybe a stepping stone into having an actual, an actual brick and mortar restaurant. So I, I would love to see our staff do a workshop. You know, where we kind of, you know, talk to them, let them know what the expectations are, what the laws are, what the ordinances are, what are the the infractions or what are the consequences if they, if they, you know, break them? And also, you know, we do have a lot of, a lot of money that we have. You know, I think thanks to COVID, I really feel that it highlighted businesses and small businesses and micro businesses a lot. So I really would love to be able to give an opportunity to those that have food trucks, you know, are ready to be able to have a brick and mortar business if that's what they, what they choose. I do understand that everybody wants that. You know, and also maybe at, at that point, we are starting to do a lot of community events. And even if we do the container village, I think that's something that we all agreed on, that we wanted that to be like a community focal point, like our living room kind of thing and have live music and different things. I know we just had the Christmas parade. That was a huge success. And so I think to me, it's kind of also just having those, making those relationships and nurturing them and kind of asking them like, you know, is that something that they're interested in and participating in community events? Because I know when we have them and we need a food truck, we're scrambling, trying to find one. So I think it's a great opportunity. I'm definitely not against our, our food trucks. But with that said, there is, you know, having an actual physical restaurant, there is a lot of overhead that that maybe the food trucks don't have. So I do think that we should have, which we probably do, and I just don't know it. A certain amount of feet or distance that they have to be to a restaurant. Trying to see what else I have on here. I know I have seen some food trucks that will have lawn chairs in front for their customers. You know, which I can understand, they want them to be comfortable. But at the same time, we don't, we don't want to impair traffic, whether it's vehicle or pedestrian traffic, just to me, because that's not a, you know, it's kind of like a hazard. You know, at least that's how I see it. I think the, the last thing that I have on here is just, you know, the zoning, maybe talk a little bit about the zoning. Are we gonna, has our cities growing? Are we gonna allow it in industrial, you know, are they allowed to be in industrial areas and residential areas and business zones? And then just be, you know, be consistent. And I think everyone, you know, has a right to try to make a living and, and, you know, follow their dreams.
Yeah, thank you. On, on that note with regarding the zoning, I forgot to mention it. They're currently permitted in industrial areas within solid ad, which includes towards Nestle Road and behind the shopping centers. But it is unclear that mobile food trucks are allowed within the other areas because it's also public right of way. It's something we want to make sure we clarify when we move forward with this, if council obviously is direct staff to do so, to clarify those zoning regulations and public right of way.
And then also I just wanted to say, you know, as the, as the council and as the city, we definitely want to support our staff and our code enforcement and make sure that we have you know, good, I guess, good rules that are going to, to help you know, to make sure that our city is, is, you know, running, running as it should. So I, you know, want to make sure that we also tackle that.
Thank you, Chief. Would you like to add something?
Yeah, and if I can clarify something, something that the mayor said about the violations and stuff. The problem that we're having are illegal trucks coming into town that don't have business license. They're not supposed to be here. They're not part of the seven that's here. Or some of the, the food trucks that won't comply with things such as if you have a trailer, you have to keep it hooked up to a truck in case you have to move it, or them claiming certain areas of town and no one else can go there. So that's why we're trying to clarify these things. Shore them up, get some kind of firm response for something that we can go deal with, those kind of issues, because we are having those kind of issues. We haven't issued citations or turn cars or anything like that, but we are having those kind of issues that we've had to shut down trucks that came from somewhere else that don't have business license. They shouldn't be here. Four or five trucks on one corner. So that's, that's like a whole premise behind this, trying to shore that up and, and fix those things so that we do have some teeth and we can afford that.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I have a couple of them. First, and the requirements, the prior is in solid ad. I see the fictitious name, business name. I was just at the county clerk. And they, I, I was trying to register my business and they said fictitious names is optional. You don't have to do it anymore. So I'm wondering if, if that is still a requirement for solid ad, where the county does not, does not provide that, doesn't require that.
I think if you have, and I may have it backwards, but if you have your name included, you don't need it, you don't need the fictitious. And then if you don't have your name included, you do have to get it.
Okay, I asked, I asked about that.
Oh, okay.
Sure, I don't know, because I, I in my couple of attempts, I registered one that I, I did have to do the fictitious name. That was like ten years ago. And then in this one that I tried to register, they said it's, it's an option. So maybe, maybe check, check with them to make sure that, that we are in the same page with them.
Yeah.
I might be wrong as well, but that's why we check, don't check with them.
We can check. And, and also one of the things we would like to include, again, upon council approval is to make sure those requirements for the type of licenses and paperwork they need to have is also within the ordinance. That way it's easier for us to let them know, hey, for our ordinance, we require these items, such as fictitious or not based on the county regulations.
Okay, and then for this, in this item, I'm a little confused. This is in the, the next slide, I think, yeah. This says not public streets or public places in the city. So does that mean that they cannot be in the city? And if they're not in the city, how we're going to enforce the code or the licensing or anything else? So can you?
Yeah, thank, thank you for pointing that out. So when reading the code, if it ultimately come out that no, you cannot be parking in the public right of way area, right? But ultimately, based on, in conversation with our city attorney, pretty much the same, the person or the business cannot claim rights to a specific public area, meaning they can't just say, oh, I'm, this is my location. I am always going to park here and, and no other food truck cannot park there. That's the, the rights that they're trying to get, yeah.
Because I think in Salinas, they have a map with the city license, which shows the location that they should be in. Is that, is that something that would prohibit it?
No, so our code is unclear with that. So when it comes to transient vendors and the definition of transient vendors, it means they should be roaming around the city moving throughout, because food trucks is something a little more unique to that chapter. And we don't have food truck regulations. Or specifically for food trucks, we would want to look into something where, you know, we set a specific look, their location for a specific amount of time. If that's what council would like.
Okay, and the last thing that I, again, I might be wrong, but I, I believe that you said they earn a lot of money, therefore we have to increase the fines. So I'm thinking how much will a fine be for food school or for companies that earn really, really good money?
So the reason that is because basically when I'm out there, fines are really small. Some of these businesses, I can say they do make a good amount. I see people all the time, they're buying their food trucks. Not only one specific, but most of them that are in town. And I think it, it it would make a difference when it hurts them in the pocket when I'm enforcing the law. That's what I'm saying.
That's, that's my question. I wouldn't create fines that measure how much that business is making or?
Through, through the Chair, I think there's two issues. One has to be with fines. And our fines can be very small, so it's not a deterrent for people to do illegal things. So I think that's one component. But the secondary component is the license fees might be maybe different for a food truck versus a, a mobile vendor who's, you know, like a, like a, you know, a vendor who's walking. I mean, obviously the sales of a food truck versus that are, are very different. So perhaps that business fee should be increased to reflect a kind of a step up from just a regular level vendor.
Because if I'm correct, in our business license, there's a section that says how much are you projecting to earn? This, and is that, that license is based on that, right?
Yes, so our business licenses is for gross annual income. And then there's also a flat fee for peddlers, which is two hundred and seventy-six. So that's just the flat fee for any peddler. And then the business licenses base per annual income.
Yeah, and I misspoke. I meant the peddler fee.
Yes, I got it.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Those are all pertinent issues that, that I was concerned about. I, I think the idea that the mayor brought up was excellent ideas. Let's take it to an ad hoc committee and, and for one to take a look at, in addition to, similar to the research that she did as well, so that I, so you're assuming this. It's structured a lot different than, than we presently have. And I just think we need to update that ordinance and update our, our fines and appropriate with the businesses that, that are operating and the ones that we're looking at. So you know, if council, we agree?
Chair, it's just developing, developing the new ordinance for, for food trucks in this specific.
Okay. With the provider right on the day. On the presentation.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, no, thank you for that. I think, yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. I think developing that ad hoc. And I think I would also say, if you look at the city of Greenfield, they also have, and some of the things that we're talking about here, they already have like, you know, some, some provisions that talk about a vehicle within three hundred feet of, you know, their main corridor, which is Al Camino Real, selling food within three hundred feet of another permitted food vendor or business, three hundred feet of a school or designated school. So I think we also take a look at that as part of the ad hoc. If you want to, I know you had brought it up. So if you want to be, you know, I, I would recommend you be part of that ad hoc. And then if there's any, any other council members that want to be part of that, to be able to look at a few different ordinances and look at what we have. You know, for me, I just want to say, I know the fees are something that we want to hit people in the pocket. But at the end of the day, if what I heard is correct from the chief, and thank you, chief, for answering my concerns, is that there's a lot of violations, not necessarily, I mean, there's some from our seven vendors, but there's a lot of illegal vendors that are coming that don't have a permit. So we want to make sure that those that are coming understand that we have, you know, we have regulations and they have to adhere by that. And then that those seven existing ones that we have, you know, that we're able to work with them in terms of some of the violations that we really want to make sure that they're not, that they're complying with the ordinance that we have. And that my concern was, I wanted to hear if, if they had become a nuisance to other businesses. And I just kind of, that was my concern in terms of what other, you know, violations had been provided to our vendors. I think it's really important to be able to track that as well for law enforcement. Given that what we have in our municipal code is tracking those violations that are existing, because I think it's important for me at least to see, hey, if we have current ordinances and those are being in violation, then what are those things that we really need to make sure that we're working to correct and working with the vendors to make sure that those violations don't continue and that we address it as part of whatever proposed municipal ordinance, ordinance change, changes. I mean, fees are included in both examples, you know, that I reviewed as well as that Mayor Protam reviewed in terms of the city of Salinas. So those are my comments. So I'll take it back, give it back to you, Mayor Protam, if you find another person for that ad hoc.
A vehicle within three hundred feet of, you know, their main corridor, which is Al Camino Real, selling food within. Three hundred feet of another permitted food vendor or business, um, three hundred feet for of a school or designated school. So I think we also take a look at. That as part of the ad hoc. If you want to, I know you had brought it up, so if you wanna be, uh, you, I I would um. Recommend you be part of that ad hoc, and then if there's any, any other council members that want to. Be part of that, to be able to look at a few different ordinances and look at what we have. I, you know, for me, I just wanna say, I know the fees are something that we wanna hit people in the pocket, but at the end of the day, if what I heard is correct from the chief, and thank you, chief, for. Answering my concerns is that there's a lot of violations, not necessarily, I mean, there's some from our seven vendors, but there's a lot of illegal vendors that are coming. That don't have a permit. So we wanna make sure that those that are coming understand that we have, you know, we have regulations and they have to adhere by that. And then that those seven existing ones that we have, um, you know, that we're able to work with them on in terms of some of the violations that. Uh, we really want to make sure that they're not, uh, that they're complying with the ordinance, um, that we have and that. Um, my concern was, I wanted to hear if if they had become a nuisance. Um, to other businesses, and I just kind of, that was my concern in terms of what other. Uh, you know, violations um, had been provided to our vendors. I think it's really important to be able to track that as well for law enforcement. Given the, what we have in our municipal code is tracking those violations that. Are existing, because I think it's important for me at least to see, hey, if we have current ordinances and those are being in violation, then what are those things that we really need to make sure that. We're working to correct and working with the vendors to make sure that those violations don't continue and that we address it as part of. Um, whatever proposed municipal ordinance, ordinance change, changes. I mean, fees are included in both examples, um, you know, that I reviewed as well as that Mayor Protem reviewed in terms of the city of Salinas. So those are uh, my comments, so I'll take it back, give it back to you, uh, Mayor Protem, if you find another person for that ad hoc.
Thank you, yes, um, why don't we right now, yeah, excuse me, right now, why don't we go ahead and take it out to the public? And then I'll bring it back. Anybody in the chairs have a comment?
Hi, yes, I do. Uh, yeah, Fernando on Soldo. I wrote some notes while we're getting the presentation. So I think my question is, um. Again, like what necessarily, why increasing the fees? I think I I get it from like a standpoint for for the law enforcement department, but. I think I struggle with like the the term like hurt them in the pockets, and I think we should talk about our residents in that way. And I think that we should actually work to sort of assist them in. Sort of figuring out what these new policies will be as opposed to just giving them fines. I think it's gonna create bitterness with the community. Um, and then if the, you all decide to just leave it downtown. Uh, what about the north part of town? So I live in the northern part of town, right? And I don't always feel like driving, especially at night, um. If there's something to eat, you know, like you get hungry. Um, so it's nice to have uh, food truck that's a little bit closer. To one where I live in the northern part of the city, since we don't really have anything that's open later at night too, and it can get. It's helpful also, um, now that we have more lights in the city to be able to walk at night and get something to eat if you. So choose, um, we're already not a walkable city, so I think that's something to consider as well. Uh, and then also just a street vending is culture, cultural correct communities. Um, myself, I'm Mexican, uh, when I visit Mexico, a lot of the time we do eat from street vendors, so I think that's something that. We should consider the cultural importance of having street vendors. Um, so the city should work to assist uh, vendors and then if policies do change. Um, an increase in fees, maybe having a discounted fees for those that are already existing in the city and for the first few as well, just so that. Um, the community knows that the city is there to help and assist them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber?
All right, and I'm listening in, and you know, I also have concerns, you know, because um, I believe, you know, our food trucks vendors, you know, they. They provide access to economical food products, you know, and in some areas where it's not accessible. Um, food vendors also keep business here in town, so that's always a plus. So I'm hoping that we can find a happy medium where um, we can work with brick and mortar businesses and. Um, our food vendors, because eventually, you know, historically, our food vendors tend to uh, move to towards brick and mortar business. After, this is their starter, um, they start out as food trucks and then they move over to brick and mortar, so let's support them. Let's support them, it's not alienating them. And I agree with everything else that I, um, Fernando said.
Thank you. Take it out to Zoom, any Zoom comments out there? Do we have anybody out there? All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the council, I know. Okay, so, uh, I I heard um, that um, establishing like a a distance between the best uh, businesses. And the food trucks, but I I also have to consider. Or we have to consider the fact that there's some of those businesses already in partnership, like the one in the uh, the pizza place. The pizza place has been for years that the food truck has been there and there is no conflict. Between the business and the food truck. So we also have to consider those businesses and see what they, what they feel about. Uh, a food truck being close to them. Now, very true, thank you. Um, yeah, same things, that's on private property, so that's a little bit different and and. With taking all the information that everybody has provided here, the part of that is they are business owners. And hopefully they are from the town, but they're here and then the, they're in the same locations every week, you can find those vendors. So we we do need the time, time it up a little bit, and because in anticipation that others will come as well. And those ones that do not pull the permits, do not, you know, abide by the rules, and we have those that are abiding by the rules. It's also supporting them. And then also keeping an eye on the brick and mortars to ensure that, that, you know, we don't. You know, we don't lose that portion of our, of our community, you know, to have an opportunity to go out and eat, because other people like to. Go to the food trucks and and get their food, but not everyone does, you know, sometimes you like to sit down and have a nice, nice uh, place to sit and eat with the family. So, um, thank you so much, um, and if, uh, so I I don't mind sitting on the the ad ad hoc committee, I don't know.
Um, yeah, I, tell me anything that, um, through the chair, they wanna give one last comment, if possible, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, as I said earlier, I'm I'm all about, you know, um. Businesses, small businesses, supporting them, guiding them, um, you know, the workshops. Um, but I also just wanted to point out that, um, as as the council, we also have a responsibility to our residents, which is to make sure that. Um, you know, just basic health and sanitation, so it is, it is, you know, an important thing to make sure that they are following. Um, the guidelines that they are following, um, law and 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 different ordinances. Obviously, I enjoy a taco as much as anyone now. Um, you know, and I'll probably be the first one lined up, uh, to get it or to offer assistance, but yeah, I just wanted to bring that up to our community that. Uh, you know, their safety and health is is are pretty much our, our job here.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else would like to serve on the ad hoc committee? Um, I'll be. So, any objections? Uh, no, just, we'll put these two. All right, so we'll have uh, Cory Eko and Deborah. On the, on the ad hoc committee for our food trucks, and then we'll take it out when in consideration and and come back with it. Thank you so much for that presentation and for the input.
Chair. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I I just wanna say my last final on that. Thank you for uh, coordinating that and making sure that we had a subcommittee to address that. Take all, everything into consideration. I just wanna say, um, my final thoughts is that we have a lot of great examples throughout our. County and also throughout our state where um, food trucks and businesses and, you know, communities. Um, work well together, have a good partnership. I mean, both are all, all are really critical, so for me, it's. You know, I didn't hear that there was any egregious health and safety concerns. I think that's what I was trying to understand today, but. But but I just wanna clarify also for our community, that that's not what we heard that's happening within our seven food trucks that exist today. It's really finding more clarity in terms of um, our ordinance that really gives more of a clear understanding of where they can and cannot be and. Um, you know, s- some of that, but I just wanna make sure that our public understands too. I didn't hear any of those egregious health and safety violations. Um, and there is a great examples throughout our county and our state where, you know, food trucks are part of a community and do do um. Provide an economic incentive also to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next presentation. To, oh, go ahead, uh, can we go ahead and get a motion for the two? Uh, I'll make the motion.
Through the chair, I just wanted to um, clarify one piece of direction, if it's amenable. Um, the staff can do research to look at best practices. Um, to bring back to the ad hoc committee sometime, probably in mid to late January, if that.
Yeah, looks so.
Okay.
Exactly, and at that time, you might wanna shape uh, the scope of the responsibilities of the ad hoc committee a little bit more. Uh, you know, with some more definition and something, so we can do that at that.
Good idea, thank you.
Great. All right, now we'll move into the presentation. Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, Partners for Peace and Melissa, is that correct?
Yes.
How you doing, Melissa?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the community. Again, my name is Elizabeth. I am the victim advocate for City of Solida. Here with me is Melissa Edwards, the program manager for Partners for Peace. Uh, Denise could not be here with us, but uh, Reyna, the um, director of prevention is on Zoom. Uh, for any follow-up questions after the presentation. Uh, to retouch on the youth violence prevention program that was brought forward uh, earlier this year. With the assistance of the ARPA funds, we are addressing balance in the community primarily focused on youth violence prevention. The Solida Police Department is collaborating with the Solida School District, Sun Street Centers, Road to Success, and Partners for. To provide resources, including drug and alcohol prevention, mental health counseling, individual counseling. Parenting youth classes and mentorships. So just to re- let on this program, the Road to Success is a diversion program for identified homeless youth. This is a three to six month program. That seeks to prevent school expulsion and or entry into the juvenile justice system by offering youth who committed um, an offense to the following. Individualized diversion plan that includes substance abuse intervention and education. Uh, youth will have to uh, complete eight to ten weeks of life skills training, uh, that assists with anger management. Coping with anxiety and making healthy choices. The youth will also have to complete uh, a certain amount of hours. Of individual or family counseling and parent workshops. One parent must complete eight or more hours of parent educational life skills training. The community accountability board, the cab includes the juvenile who committed an offense, his or her family. And community members to review the reasons for the offense and discuss the impacts. A di- a diversion agreement is made that includes community service hours, resolution to the victim and or counseling. Youth participating in the program do have to complete a certain amount of pro-social hours. Those are hours spent learning a new skill sets. Or community service hours that can be completed in churches, libraries, uh, or community businesses. Prevention of school expulsion, a case manager will collaborate with the youth parents and school administration. Administrator to determine whether suspension or expulsion is the most appropriate path to meet the educational needs of the youth. Program progress and activities as of July twenty twenty-three. The case managers are, uh, two case managers are assigned to the city of Solida. One is assigned to the uh, school district that handles their referrals, and the other is assigned to the referrals made by the Solida Police Department. And the Monterey County Juvenile Probation Department. Fourteen parents and families have received case management services. Its youth and families are currently enrolled in the program. With four uh, youth and families pending contact. Some community accountability board has been held since July twenty twenty-three. Partners for Peace. Oh. Yeah, Partners for Peace. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to change the slide, my apologies. Okay. Partners for Peace provides prevention and intervention classes for parents and caregivers of youth. Classes that are provided, um, strengthening families program, a prevention and intervention program. This is for parents and youth. Age of ten to seventeen. The parent project intervention program is for parents and caregivers of youth eleven to seventeen years of age. For that are experiencing challenging and destructive behaviors. Loving Solutions Prevention Program uh, for parents and car- caregivers of youth five to ten years of age. Uh, Partners for Peace also provides a mentoring program for seventh and eighth grade youth, boys and girls. They held their very first Solida Mentoring Program here in Solida, um, this year. It is called the Step Up Mentoring Solida, and like I said, it's designed for seventh and eighth grade youth. It's a weekly. Uh, group program that helps you step up in out of life circumstances that are preventing them from reaching their dreams. Modern life skills activities include social, emotional learning, career readiness, financial literacy. Civic engagement, leadership, academic and academic success. Um, there are so many great things I could say about the Solida Mentoring Program. I know that Cindy, the lead mentor, wanted to come to city council to do her own. Presentation that we got to see today from her, um, but uh, they had their graduation. Um, sometime in November and twenty-seven youths from Solida graduated from the program. Um, so it was a huge accomplishment. Uh, the next Solida Mentoring Program starts in March of twenty twenty-four. Program progress and activities. Thank you. Program uh, progress and activities as of July of twenty twenty-three. Community presentations, uh, Partners for Peace have presented to the Solida Police Department, Main Street. Middle School and Hardell College and and they've received a total of thirty-four referrals through the multi. Multi-disciplinary team from Solida. Uh, they've attended and provided resource tables for two events. Uh, for parents' education classes. Ten families graduated from the Loving Solutions uh, program from Gavilon Elementary School. And nine families are currently taking the uh, strengthening fa- family program class at Main Street Middle School. And they are set to graduate, I believe, like January twenty twenty-four. Yeah. Um, training of family coaches, so Partner for Peace also offers um. Training uh, to facilitate these classes. So community members can participate and receive this training to be able to facilitate any of these classes. And they have provided, uh, the community, six community members have been certified to facilitate, facilitate the Loving Solutions Program. Five community members have been certified to facilitate the parent project uh, program. And eighteen community members have been certified to facilitate the Strengthening Families Program, myself included. So that concludes our presentation. Open for questions, thank you.
Thank you, uh, council. Or let me open it up to the public, public, any questions? Here in the chamber? Regarding the presentation?
Hi again, Monica, not question but a comment, you know, um, I went on one of those, um, eighteen, um, training. For the strengthening family coaches, and I think as a mother, I'm very glad that I took that, those, that, that training. Um, the information there is very practical and it's very relevant for all parents, and we encourage that in the future. Parents, you know, participate in these, um, because it shows you how to engage with your child, with your children. And make equitable decisions within the family and communicate better. So I am glad to have Solida partner up. And have these kind of trainings for our, much needed trainings for our families, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Take it out to Zoom. Seeing them, bringing it back to council, council, council. Member Cory.
Um, yes, I first of all, wanted to thank um, Elizabeth and also Partners for Peace on on putting this together and. You know, seeing it through, and I just wanted to, um, you know, echo how, how important it is to be able to have that support for families. For our, you know, our young ones and not even teenagers, even seventh graders, eighth graders, and be able to give them, um, something to, you know. To distract them, something good like, uh, you know, work or an interest that they have, a hobby that they have or something. I know, um. For me, I I don't share a lot about my personal life, but this year I did have, um, someone very close to my family, a teenager that was. Struggling, just struggling with, I'm not sure, you know, mental health or struggling with. You know, different pressures that teenagers have that we didn't have growing up. Um, and, you know, just to be able to have something like this to offer in a small rural city like Solida to me is huge. I I am. A huge advocate of our children and of second chances, and I think every child, and even every adult for that matter. Deserves a second chance and and somebody to be an advocate for them, and I'm glad that, you know, that we have this program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. I am looking at one first, thank you so much for all the work that you guys do, and I'm really glad to see that. Sun Street is partnering with other organizations to bring good things to our community. I I actually worked for. Sun Street Centers a long, long time ago, from ninety-seven to, we started to. Two thousand and four, and um, I know first hand of all the work that. For those guys there to uh, to bring um, hope and and a better future for people and trouble and. And I particularly like the uh, the part, I think is, let me see, one, two, three, four. Um, in this mentoring uh, program, you have social, emotional learning, career readiness. Financial literacy, civic engagements, and academic su- success. And I think that is a perfect order because in order to have academic success, you need uh, a social. An emotional uh, well-balanced individual. Not only that, you need the career uh, readiness, it's something. Like having plans for the future, and I have uh, experience in that, if you have a goal in the future, it's. Your life is better guided. But that cannot happen if you don't have the support, and I think that you guys are providing that. Uh, I cannot stress enough in how much. Uh, I cannot stress enough in how much support, and I always tell this to my 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 girls. Uh, you have, in order to succeed academically, you you need support both in the house uh and in your friends, but also you need a little bit of support when in a group that you have a particular e- even if you don't have the same, the same goals, but you have uh goals that you guys share a responsibility and that reinforcing what you have. In this case, you have a plan really well established, and and I think that you beautiful things will come out of it. So, thank you so much for for all the efforts, and I know my wife is already there, but I might be able to participate later on. Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Velazquez?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I just want to echo just some of the sentiments. Thank you so much to um Melissa. Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, thank you, Cindy. Unfortunately, Cindy's not able to be here, but I know that she has been a stunt stunt advocate for this program as well, and, you know, obviously, this is a partnership. Um, and we couldn't do this, and I think for our community members to understand the importance of these partnerships and networks and resources that come together to provide and offer these opportunities because through our ARPA dollars, I know um, you know, the Youth Violence Prevention Program was really something that um Mayor Potem and myself were really pushing several years ago. Um, and so we're excited to make sure that to see the fruition of that. But, you know, I know it took us some time, um but here we are. So just the partnership also with Heart Now, because I believe there's Heart Now funding also that came to the mix, Partners for Peace, and then Sun Street Centers. So uh for me, I just want to say, you know, I have um a long history also with Sun Street Centers, and when my, when I was in my early twenties, I worked for um Preventing Alcohol-Related Trauma that was under the umbrella of Sun Street Centers, and also a lot of the work that I did in Salinas was around prevention with youth, and Partners for Peace was already in existing and doing a lot of that great work. So I just want to say thank you again. Um, we can do this. Our general fund dollars don't allow us as a city to have all of these um fundings to make this available, but I just want to say thank you to the partnerships. And then also, I I really want to give a shout out to the uh Step Up Mentoring Youth. Um, I know they invited me to be part of the civic engagement component, so I had an opportunity to meet them, to talk to them, um to just, you know, be be around them, and they were amazing. We did a brief, brief uh just kind of city council mock hearing. So as you see in some of those photos, they were up there in the dais, and they sat down, they selected a mayor, the council, and it was just really incredible to see um all of the ideas and just all of the the, you know, o- opportunities. Um, and a lot of the skill sets that these that these uh young kids have, and to be able to continue to foster that as a as a council, I think it's really important. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all, also all of our community members that stepped up, right? Because we can't do this also without those parent family coaches and those mentors. So I just, you know, thank you to everyone that makes this possible, because if not for that, um, this couldn't happen. So I just want to say shout out to everyone, and congratulations to the parents and the youth that are part of the program.
Thank you. Um. I just have a a couple of questions and then a comment. Uh, question being is, I I haven't seen, I I've seen the gap and the gap that when I first uh brought this forward and and pursued uh doing a youth violence prevention program is that gap of eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. Um. I'm not hearing it, um, and I might be wrong. Maybe uh the the police are referring people to Sun Street for that component. Uh, I'm not sure. Could you share with me what you guys are doing with uh what Partners for Peace and you guys are doing with uh with that that age group, eighteen to twenty-four?
Well. Oh, and but um referrals. So um for right now, for the program, I have not referred for, because I typically send my referral for Silver Star Resource Center, which is kind of the hub of all these programs, and who accepts the referrals for Partners for Peace, and I believe that they only usually take for juveniles under age eighteen. However, for anybody who needs resources um for mental health services, substance abuse, I am constantly um getting people calling me um looking for these referrals, and I'm typically able to just email them the list of referrals. We can talk about it, talk about um which one would be more helpful for them. So anybody who really needs the help and support, um, they could always contact me. So, because I'm very familiar with a lot of the resources that are offered here in Monterey County, and most definitely, we can um refer them to a program that can help and specifically for their needs.
And for us, our our services for the youth only go up to age eighteen. Um, however, we do have a systems navigator, so when things come through and we find a need in a a family that needs, you know, maybe an overview that needs access to employment, we can connect them with workforce development or um mental health if they need those services, whatever it may be. So we've got that component of place management ability in our with our services.
True. The in in, you know, uh, because uh for me, it was, we're going to be looking for the referrals from the police department to keep those, try to keep them out of the system as much as possible. Uh, one of the things that we talked about, best way to keep them, uh jail, give them a job, uh get keep a gun out of their hand, those type of things, and and so I'm not hearing that right now.
And that's and that's what we're worried about.
The foundation is. I'm excited about everything you guys do.
Yeah, no, and that's what we're working on right now. As a matter of fact, um it was at the meeting the other night with the Business Association downtown, because we were talking about how the schools will concentrate on the kids in school or the the kids making good grades, you're going to school, staying in school, doing all those kind of things, where we need to concentrate on the folks that aren't straight A students, that aren't going to school all the time, that are out doing that kind of stuff. So we're working with the business communities uh to actually work on getting that part of the school community to jobs, part-time jobs, after-school jobs, things like that, to give them some guidance and direction that way.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
And it's going to be for the older, the older set. It's it's, you know, we're we're not going to, we're not going to put the middle schoolers to work uh and stuff like that, but it's to give them a skill set to to give them something else to do other than run the street.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, because the question from is eighteen to twenty-four. In addition, we can, we can capture them at the school. We see the needs and we get the referrals from the school, so that that's captured in there, and and it's when I get the contact with the police who know they who they are, and similar to the ceasefires and their programs that have participated in that that group that eighteen to twenty-four that needs a job, that needs, you know, fifteen to twenty-four, sixteen, then, you know, those other guys that originally get themselves in, a lot of show, want to get in the system. And so hopefully, this youth violence prevention gives our youth here in the city of Solida skills and knowledge to stay away from that.
Right, and and those are the ones that we're reaching out to. Um, because like I said, the the schools, uh, school-age kids, we're really lucky, I would say, and we're the the business to do to try and get them jobs and things like that.
Okay, and could we get a report in that for your progress, maybe like in February or something like that? Is that possible, council? Would you guys?
Chair, it's okay, just to show a little progress, maybe March with that.
There you go. Okay, Mark. And thank you so much for the presentation, not both you, Elizabeth, and you're doing some exciting stuff out there. Want to still capture that 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 last group right there and and hopefully knock on one things uh things are going well right now. I'll I'll just leave it like that.
To the chair, now that that we said March, uh, I remember that you have something that starts on March twenty-four? Uh, the second group?
Partners for Peace. Oh, yeah, so for the Solida Mentoring Program, it's going to restart in March of twenty twenty-four. They're also having their pa- pathways to success um events. That's going to be held in Main Street Middle School on March second, March second.
I'm wondering if we should wait a little bit longer so that they can have an afternoon commission for us?
Sure. Yeah. It's up to you.
Yeah, sure.
And to the chair, thank you. And I I did want to um speak a little bit on, I I believe Elizabeth brought up that um or or the chief that they had spoken to some of the businesses, and they did um attend the last um meeting, which was actually last week for the Solida Merchants, and and I think it was Denise was there. Um, we also had the school district there. Um, and it was a a pretty very thorough presentation. I want to say we had almost double the slides um that we had here uh today. But um what I wanted to say was there was a lot of interest from businesses to help out, you know, um you know, these uh these uh students and and also young adults that need help, so there was definitely interest there. I think it's a good program. Um, something else that I wanted to bring up on here, it speaks on community volunteers. It says community service hours and local agencies, organizations, such as churches, schools, libraries, or businesses. And something that was brought up at the Solida Merchants meeting was that um a big component of this program is our community. So like for those of us that are sitting here um on the dais or or those of you, I see a lot of actually leaders, you know, strong leaders that are sitting here in the chambers, and I'm sure we have many on Zoom as one. I just really want to encourage all of you, if you could be in a position to mentor, you know, some some of these um young, young people, some of these youth, um whether it's, you know, for your job, your church, um your organization, you know, I I believe that there are opportunities, and I would just like to ask Elizabeth, if anyone is out there listening and they want to be a part of this or would like more information, who can they reach um for more information on that?
Uh, they could contact me. Um, I did not provide my email address, but they could find my email address and our website, the Solida Police Department, pick up at the website, my email there, as well as my phone number.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate being able to serve your families and your community.
Oh, Chair.
You may ask.
All right, moving on to the, oh, go ahead, go ahead, here.
Yes, sorry, yeah, I just have um just some final comments on that. Again, thank you for bringing that up. I know that the plan was um that gap from eighteen to twenty-four as well. So what I would like to see when it does come back, uh in addition to the report that you requested, is that we look at the plan that was adopted, right? Because I think the ARPA plan, I uh although obviously we said it was a work in progress, there was already an adoption that has already some um indication of what we were looking for in terms of the plan. So if we can bring back the plan as well and bring um a report and follow-ups on those items that were specific to the plan. Um, so that's one of my recommendations aside to the report. And then also, I I know that there's a lot of discussion uh in regards to job uh job training. Uh, we had a long discussion, I think, before, you know, before we're, before we put the plan together, but job training was a big component, especially between that eighteen to twenty-four. Um, given that, you know, we participated in a summit that happened in Solida, and it was really focused on, they brought us different ideas, and one of them was City of Seaside is already has an existing workforce development kind of uh mentoring that they're doing with their students. So a possibility of looking at how to, how can we incorporate that as part of that other segment that I is not presented here today. Um, and then also, I I want to make sure I say this for for Megan, there's a lot of money um right now at the state level where they're doing a lot of exploration of workforce development, so it's under the workforce development category. So I want to make sure that we don't miss out on that, because this is an opportunity between that eighteen to twenty four-year-old gap to help us um to get money to really be able to create those programs. And also the other component that um the state is really looking at, and this is a lot of what I've learned last week attending the uh Cal Cities Conference, is that um the construction and the trades are really critical. And so there's a lot of already, um, they offer a lot of job opportunities aside from, you know, our our vendors, our businesses, our local businesses. These are long-term sustainable jobs, right? They can provide viable, livable wages for our our youth. Um, and I think that's kind of the end goal for us is how do we, how do we transform that, and how do we make sure we have those pathways and opportunities? So um, you know, I think that's something that's really critical, and if at some point we need to form another ad hoc subcommittee, I think it's really critical because it is very different than some of the other programs that we heard today. I think that's a more specific and more concrete, and will require a lot more collaboration and funding to be able to to get that going. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So just to add that direction, uh go and bring that back with the report and then uh discussion, and also the outline of the previous agreement that we had and the target group that we're looking at, I think, was also included in in discussion of that as well. All right, thank you so much.
Chair, just um based on the comment from uh council member um Cabrera, is April okay? Would April work?
It goes for me, council?
Okay, we'll put it on for April.
Yeah, so we can compare it quite first.
All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Thanks so much, lady. Uh, all matters under the consent calendar are considered routine by the city and will be adopted by one action. And if the council or council member has any questions or wishes to make a statement uh or discuss an item in that event, the mayor will uh will remove the item from the consent calendar for separate consideration. Presently, the consent counter goes from C one to C eight. Council, does anyone want to pull anything off the consent counter? No.
Sure, Chair, I do. I just have pull items that C dash eight for a question. I just have a question on that.
C dash eight, cool. Uh, I'd like to just for information's sake, a brief uh of information regarding C seven, but it's been managed. It would be appreciated. Uh, C seven and C eight, I'd like to take it out to the public. Anybody would like to see an item pull? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like to call on C three and C eight.
Okay, that's already, C eight. So C three, C seven, C eight? No. And in the chambers? Anybody in Zoom? Seeing that, I'll take a motion to adopt uh the consent counter with the exception of C three, C seven, and C eight. So, no.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second, but for level, uh, we'll call.
Yes.
Mayor of San Juanes?
Yes.
Governor Maria Carlebo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
Yes.
All right, so that passes. Now we'll move to item C three, that with um council member for level.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, I pulled up C three because I had asked, I believe it was at the last meeting, had asked staff regarding if we are able to um provide information for domestic violence when it comes to the um either the police report. I I believe the police report not so much, the victim's advocate report. Um, and again, my reason is because we um you know, I just feel that domestic violence unfortunately is an issue, not just in Solida, but in in, you know, the nation. Uh, and I really want us to start documenting that and showing it on the reports because I would like for us to hopefully get a grant and be able to get a safe house for for young women uh or for women and children and and maybe even men, you know, uh nowadays. Unfortunately, I don't think domestic violence knows, you know, gender. Um, so just wanted to put that out there again. If we could please add that line on there. I double-checked. I don't know. I saw it.
I don't know if um Chief wants them.
Yeah, we can, we can go ahead and make a specific um thing just uh for that. All it can be is numbers. We may have any kind of information.
Yeah.
Uh, we can have the numbers. And um we just started working with the DA's office on that particular issue, um trying to find uh safe houses and things like that. So um we've, we're, we're looking into all that.
Thank you.
But we, but we can add another line on there. Uh, like I said, all it can be is numbers.
Yeah, understandable.
And I could share with you too, you know, the line of work is that there are very few safe houses for, you know, uh, women and families, um, you know. One of the other problematic things is then animals as well.
Yeah.
Women and their families and then that as well. So it is very.
And like you said, unfortunately, when funding starts going away, it's for things like that that go away first. Um, yeah. Why? I don't know, but that's, that's the nature of these.
Yeah, come in. And um to the chair.
Yes.
Um, I believe that although there's a a lot we're doing, and I can't say that this is gonna be number one priority, but I did hear from council the desire to investigate um some type of domestic violence shelter opportunity here in um in South County or Solida. So to see what we can do to beef up those services. So it is something we're looking into.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to uh C seven, uh this one I asked to bring up. I just want to share some of, and we talked about the Youth Violence Prevention Program. Now we're doing some stuff on the other end to, we don't even have to filter this program, hopefully. Through the the city manager will be able to share with us what the. Through the, the city manager will be able to share with us what, what we're doing.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm very excited. We have an amazing um. Uh, parks and recreation team, starting with um, Jessica Potts, um, recreation manager. And she has um, applied for funding more recently for, through the Well and Hell. Grant for senior outings, but this is now is through um, is the. Outdoor equity grant through the state to apply for funding um. For um, for up to half a million dollars um, to um, support. Um, eight um, outings for our families um, to uh. You know, uh, experience our wonderful state parks and other. Um, beautiful public lands we have with the pinnacles in our backyard. So um, this will fund. Up to um, eighty youth ages ten through seventeen um, per trip. And it'll include transportation, food and staffing. Um, and so again, we're really excited about the possibility. It's a highly competitive brand, so we don't. Know if we'll get funding, but um, we're looking to do all things um, to help our families. Who may not have the funding get to these places.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, item eight, Mayor, I think you pulled this one.
Yeah, but I have a, uh, uh, Chair, just a, a quick question on that one. Also, Megan, I'm. I know that I had sent over some information because there's also another, and I don't know if it's this equity grant or another grant, but I had asked about it. There's that fourth graders in the city of Sal- in Salinas had received one of the school districts. Of for uh, passes for all the fourth graders to be able to go to a national park. So. Um, and just, I, I know, I don't know if it's part of this or not, but there is other opportunities that we can make sure that that's still in our radar as well. Cause I know that that require the collaboration with the school district.
Absolutely, yeah. We, we will follow up. I think um, like I said, Jessica and I are. Very focused on what we can do to fundraise for our rec center, uh, community center. So, yes, we will follow up.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So I, I pulled C dash eight because there was, um, I, by the way, I think this is a great opportunity. I think it's important. Um, in regards to the conversations we had about our small businesses. I think the city of Salinas, the city of Solidad sorry, has been. Um, you know, the last several years since COVID, very supportive of our small businesses. Um, and this is another opportunity and example of how the city um, has moved forward. So I wanna really thank staff for working on all of these. Components, but I did have a clarification because I know that this requires a, a match. A local match of ten thousand dollars, but in the language. There is, um, it says NBC has secured ten thousand from the city of Monterey and a satellite location in Monterey. Um, so I don't know if that's a typo or are we also, will the ten thousand. Cover the Monterey site or only the Solidad site? So that's my clarification on that.
Um, yeah, I can clarify, this is um. They ha- they're gonna have two satellite issues, uh, satellite offices. One for the city of Monterey, city of Monterey is funding that, the ten thousand dollars, and then one in Solidad. Um, there might have maybe written in a confusing manner, but yeah, our funding is. Is going towards an entire a hundred and twenty thousand dollar match that they have to secure. For the, to have the Small Business Development Center. Um, and so they've, they've received. A funding for the city of Monterey and ten, for ten thousand dollars. In other jurisdictions. And in fact, I think just yesterday they received. An allocation of sixty-four thousand from the county of Monterey for this purpose, so.
Okay, so just to clarify then, the ten thousand is specific for the site in Solidad. But the hundred and twenty thousand, there's all these other cities that are putting in money for uh, under.
Yeah, the ten, to clarify, the ten thousand dollars is part of the hundred and twenty thousand that they need to raise. They're raising it collectively from all of the different cities, but we benefit because we'll have the satellite office.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um.
And, and also in case there's any questions, we do have the, the MCBC team here um. That have been patient.
Megan, can, can we have them say a few, a few words, Chair, if it's possible? Because this is something new for us and obviously. It doesn't include money, so I think it's important for transparency purposes.
Sounds good. Let's go ahead and, do a minute, hold one minute and have a council member for level.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so one of the reasons I wa- wanted to pull this item is because I have had. The honor of working with um, Jesus, um, you know, I wanna say a couple of years now maybe. And just the commitment that I have seen, you know, from, from the organization, from um, Jose Luis San Jesus. Um, they have come to, you know, Solidad, they have become a staple, I think, to our businesses. And I'm pretty sure to our staff and our community. Um, I, you know, see them. Early in the morning for the cafecito at eight o'clock. I see him late at night for Solidad merchant meetings. I see them in between. For different, um, you know, business um, events and, and community events. Um, they're very accessible, very approach- approachable and very knowledgeable. And I think to me, the uh, the ten thousand dollars um, is, it will be. Money well spent because I know that a outside consultant would probably charge us. A lot more than ten thousand for a whole year and we wouldn't be getting the same. Um, the same service that, that we're getting now. So I just wanted to, to thank you for that and I'm excited. Um, you know, to see this on our agenda.
Well, thank you for your kind words, Maria. Um, so I'm Paul and I work with. Jesus, and I think this is a great opportunity. I like to say with change comes opportunity. And I think you're going to see, should we win this contract? Um, you're gonna see a lot more attention in South County. And what I told the, the county yesterday, they were proposing to fund us. Half of what we were looking for essentially, but I said equity is really important. It's been important to the building business back team. Being here in South County with the people who most need the help when it comes to accessing capital and dealing with governmental things. I mean, we've, we've been here and will continue to be here. So that's very important. And I think. As Megan said, by having the satellite office located here, it's just easier to, you know, help. Our clients who are here, right? Um, the, the other part is. It, it says a lot that the county and all of these other cities, just yesterday, we also got, we're asking five K from each of the cities in the county. We're also reaching out to San Benito County, cause S B D C will cover both Monterey and San Benito Counties. But we're lining them all up and everybody recognizes the value and just as councilor Cora Levo said. It's a small investment for you from what, what we're looking to get. Our total budget will be somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars. We get a hundred and seventy-five K, we're anticipating from the federal government through the Small Business Administration. But they expect us to pull together the resources that we're doing. So bringing together all the cities and, and we're also going to. Private partners, the banks and others, just trying to pull all these resources together so that we can be successful. I'll let Jesus talk a little bit about specific numbers here and how, how else we can improve this here. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. So previously, uh, these are S B D C numbers, uh, they have helped a total of twenty-eight businesses. Me alone, I have done outreach uh, in Solidad and I've talked to well over sixty businesses consistently. So we're listening to the businesses, we're taking, um, we're asking them, what is it that they're looking for? And we're trying to do that is bringing. The services to them instead of having to drive all the way to Salinas where it's a little bit harder to access the resources. So. We're definitely uh, expecting to raise those numbers that the S B D C has currently uh, for the businesses that currently help in, in Solidad and South County.
Thank you. And the money that you allocate would only be if we're awarded the contract. We think there are only a couple of people applying for it. Cause there's a lot of work to do it. Um, the deadline is next Friday, the fifteenth. Um, and then they will notify by February first. And we'd be happy to come back here should we be awarded and talk to you about lots of different things that we're, we're talking about doing. Um, so thank you for your time and. And I appreciate your support.
Any additional questions? Anyone just pull?
Just a question for, uh, comment. I, I, it might be a, you know, on.
Stand by.
Uh, I thought, but in the first line says about resolution number blank.
We're missing the number.
Yes, C eight, yeah, the first line.
Sixty thirty? Resolution number sixty thirty?
Uh, under recommendation. The first line says, uh, city of Solidad about resolution number, and mine doesn't have.
On the agenda, it's on the agenda, if it's not on.
If you look at that, I do.
Yeah, I might not have gotten added in the agenda when we were um, doing the numbers, but.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Uh, take it out to the public, uh, any comments? Any comments in Zoom? If not, bring it back, bring it back to the council. We have three items, C three, C seven, C eight. Can I get a motion to approve?
I moved to.
I have a motion to the mayor, second from Paul Level, on, uh, roll call.
Mayor Alavazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Ken Ben Huenus.
I.
Councilmember Ray Flonabel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to uh, business, uh, item update is uh, planning commission appointment. Uh, to fill vacancy. I'll turn this over to uh, our city manager. Megan?
Yeah, and I um, I appreciate the um, patience that um. Are uh, candidates for this position that have ha- uh, had and, and the patience um, council has had. Um, since May of eleventh, um, the planning commission has had a vacancy and it, there has been some discussion about. Changing the process. Um, as of uh, the last meeting on November um, fifteenth, we did get clarification that we should move. Um, as soon as possible with this um. Filling the, the vacancy. Um, I did note that um, we, we did receive um, an application. Because we never did close the uh, the planning commission um. Uh, acceptance of applications. So the last application we, we received was on November third. Um, we forwarded the applications uh, to the, to the mayor. Um, because uh, I think council is aware that it's a mayoral appointment with approval from uh, city council. Um, and so um, after forwarding her the applications and she could speak um, further. Um, the recommendation was to move forward with um.
Well, I wanna do this, if I may, if I can, you know, for a second, go ahead and turn it over to the, to this, the mayor's appointment. Go ahead and turn it over to the mayor.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Chair, for turning it over to me. So Megan, thank you for bringing that. So as Megan said, we had three different applicants. Um, and I just wanna say thank you to, to all of them. Thank you, Philip Nickerson, and thank you, uh, Roger Barrientos, also for applying for the position. I wanna go ahead and move forward with a recommendation as per our report today with Lorenzo Sanchez. Um, as many of you may or may not know him, Lorenzo has been. Um, has, you know, has been a resident of the city of, of Solidad for many, many years. His family, his wife. Have all been um, civically engaged in our city. He comes with a lot of experiences. He's also overseeing code enforcement division. For the city of Salinas for over seventeen years. And then he also, he was also, he has nineteen years of enforcement experience. He was also a firefighter engineer for six years for the city of Solidad. And a nine-one-one emergency dispatch dispatcher with Monterey County. For two years, wastewater operator in Solidad for two years and a lead rental housing inspector with the city of Santa Cruz for five years. Um, so he comes for me with just a lot of um, you know, a lot of background, a lot of information. Um, a, a lot of knowledge as well in terms of responsibilities, especially as our city's growing and changing. How we're really put uh, looking at code enforcement, looking at land use planning. You know, being innovative and looking at what our residents need. Um, he obviously has a lot of those, those qualifications. Um. He's also, you know, been invested in other um, other areas. You know, he was a catechism teacher also for. Um, for many, many years and part of the um, Knights of Columbus for the city of Solidad. So with that, unless anyone has. Any questions, I think this is an ama- a, a great appointment. And a great addition already to the planning commission that we have that is very knowledgeable, works really well together. I think he'll bring a different perspective. Um, and a lot, a lot that will contribute to how Solidad can move successfully with. You know, our future planning projects that we, we will have and then some of our current pla- projects that we have. So with that, I'll um. I would lo- you know, I would uh, recommend the appointment of Lorenzo Sanchez. And I don't know if Lorenzo's here, council, if. Anyone wants to, uh, if he's here, Megan, if we, if, you know, if we can allow him to.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, I'll, I'll go ahead and take it over from here. Thank you so much and we'll give a, 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 or a, uh.
Lorenzo.
Lorenzo, excuse me. And I know Lorenzo, he tapped my house one time at the garage sale, so I remember him. Yeah, my wife won't anyway. Yeah, I would give him, give you an opportunity to talk, but I, I would like to have the council also to have an opportunity as well to. To say a few comments, if you like.
I'm sure I, I do not have the pleasure of knowing Lorenzo, um, but I, I do just um. Honestly wanna say that I think we have a great, uh, we had a great batch. So I'm sure the mayor had a very uh, difficult decision to make. We have, you know, a code enforcement. Um, a manager, we had a real estate um, agent, and then we had a, a US veteran and also one of our. Um, volunteers with our, with our police department, which is Mr. Nickerson. So I. You know, um, just wanted to thank everybody that, that applied and I hope moving forward, you know, we continue to get more interest than. And you know, whoever uh, we don't select, uh, whoever doesn't get, gonna get selected, I hope that they continue. You know, to um, to look for opportunities to volunteer in our city.
Thank you.
Uh, no, I don't have a, I don't have a pleasure, but uh. And um, I don't have any questions. I think that, that if the mayor uh, looking for it and, and, and. He has all the qualifications that she's uh, saying, uh, he does, I think it would be wonderful to have an award. In the planning commission. All the shoes that he has is uh, it's gonna be a benefit to our city.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of comments uh, for myself. I'd like to thank uh, the applicants, all three of you, but especially. Uh, Philip Nickerson and Roger, uh, because of the fact that you guys played since July and you've been waiting a long time to hear back from us. And that's on us, that's uh, we should have moved forward. Uh, fortunately, we did, get an excellent candidate and America's made an excellent selection. And uh, uh, but. Hopefully doesn't discourage anybody from participating. Because sometimes it seems like, well, why, why even try it? I'm not getting any return. Or I'm not, at least tell me your name. That's, I've always been that way. I don't got it, I didn't get the job, then I didn't get the job, just let me know so I can move on. Uh, so thank you for them uh, offering to give themselves to work on the, the planning commission, cause it's not an easy job. Uh, it's one that takes uh, you know, uh, big consideration as far as the growth and what's the better. Betterment of the city itself. So um, if we could do by roll call.
I didn't know.
Oh, no, excuse me, yes. I apologize.
Mayor of the council, Mayor. Thank you very much for the uh, appointment, or for the recommendation for the appointment for our planning commission. Um. I feel like I should be like a hundred years old or something, based on everything that I've been doing. Um, but uh, yeah, I started my career here in Solidad, uh, code enforcement officer, firefighter. Um. And catechist, Knights of Columbus, being on the, um, Solidad useful um, rep for nine years. Um, PTA, chair of the PTA. So I've done a lot of things here for the community. Um, originally I'm from Watsonville. Um, but I feel like now I'm, I am in Solidad, I've lived in Solidad longer than I have in Watsonville. Um, I, I'm glad I'm being considered for the, the opportunity. Um, I bring a lot of uh. Passion and, and um, and a new perspective. Uh, one of the things that uh, I understand that is that this position is a difficult position, but so is code enforcement. And I remember my first day here in Solidad getting hired. Mayor said, congratulations on being the most hated person in the world. Uh, after nineteen years of being in the code enforcement field, I haven't felt that. And it's because of the customer service that I bring the uh, the energy and looking at things. In a, with the, with the solution. And not looking for the problems and how can we overcome, what is the betterment for, for the community? What is the betterment for the resident? What is the betterment for everybody in general? So um, I'm gonna bring that to the planning mission as well. And that same energy and that same thought process and um, what is right for Solidad. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks much. Anyone in a, figure out the public comment? Anybody have any comments? Inside the chamber, seeing none, we'll take it out to Zoom. Seeing none, um. Mayor, this is your appointment. Uh would you like a roll call?
Yes, please. If we can go ahead and move forward with the roll call. Yes.
All right.
Yeah, congrat- Lorenzo, I just want to reiterate again, also, you know, thanking Philip. And and Roger Barrientos, Philip Nickerson, I, you know, say hello to Jeanette for me. Um but thank you already for investing in our community and we look forward to other opportunities. There's. Obviously, we need good people to continue to do the work of the city, so we look forward to having you come back and how we can um. How you can be part of the good things that are happening in the city of Solidad, and I know you're already doing a lot, so thank you.
All right, moving on, uh item, business item B two, uh I'll turn this over to um our city manager, Megan. City attorney?
So on October fourth of two thousand twenty-three, the city council adopted a reason number seven sixty-five, which established the five district voting system in the city of Solidad. Under the adopted five district voting organization, each council member will be elected by the voters of five separate districts. And those districts will be established by an approved map. On second, the mayor's position would no longer be elected at large, but instead it would be selected by council member. By a process that was approved by the council. The ordinance as adopted was to take effect on November fourth of two thousand twenty-three. However, on October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the city clerk's office received a referendum petition against ordinance number seven sixty-five. And basically, the referendum process, which is established by the election code, divides citizens with the means where foreign ordinance passed by the council. To a vote of the people. Referendum proponents circulate a petition and uh in circulating that petition, they gather signatures of registered voters within the city. To qualify for city action, a referendum petition must contain signatures of at least ten percent of the registered voters. Of the city in which it's located. In the city of Solidad, that threshold was eight hundred and forty signature. So upon receipt of the uh the referendum, the city clerk did a initial intake uh evaluation of the petition. And determined that it was complete. Thereafter referred it to the Monterey County Register of Voters for signature examination. And on November fourteenth, the register of voters determined that the petition contained eight hundred and sixty-two valid signatures, which exceeded the eight hundred and forty. Minimum number of valid signatures necessary to qualify the referendum for consideration by the city council. Um a number of certificates came, went in from the uh the register of voters, certified and signatures, and then. The city clerk was required to prepare a separate certificate of petition that said, yes, this uh referendum uh petition. Uh is sufficient for subsequent city council action. So upon receipt of a certified uh referendum, such as we have here uh before us this evening. The effective date of ordinance number seven sixty-five has been postponed pending the outcome of the recording process. The council by law must now decide what action it wishes to take in response to the referendum. Council basically has two options. The first option is to repeal ordinance number seven sixty-five. So in doing that, uh to undo an ordinance, you have to take the same action that you did in adopting the ordinance. So in other words, it requires an ordinance to. Repeal the ordinance. So staff in anticipation that that might be one of the options that the council would choose tonight. Has prepared an ordinance, it's on the agenda this evening, which will repeal ordinance number seven sixty-five in its entirety. If um that is the path that the council wishes to choose, the uh ordinance would be introduced with a title being waived tonight. And then it would be brought back in a subsequent meeting for consideration of approval. But it's that two-step process that we always have to follow for ordinances. Um once ordinance number seventy uh seven sixty-five was rescinded. An ordinance with essentially the same content, in other words, another five district ordinance could not be enacted again by the council for a period of one year. Um and also upon repeal of ordinance seven sixty-five. The existing at-large elections process that we have in place will remain in effect until the council. Um considers uh an alternative voting scheme. Um and approves the same or decides to do nothing at all. But basically, this will undo the districting action that was taken back in October. The second option the council has before this evening is to call uh an election to vote on ordinance number seven sixty-five. In other words, to put the referendum question on the ballot. Um the election must be held, this is all a little technical, but not less than eighty-eight days from the date the election is called. You know, later than the next regular municipal election. So if the council decides to pursue this option, it has to decide whether or not it wants to call the special election on the next. Available election date, which is March fifth, two thousand twenty-five, or the next general municipal election in November of two thousand twenty-four. So in order for us to uh the council to take action uh to refer the matter to the March fifth election, we would need to have a resolution. That uh requested the register of voters do um and the elections department to consolidate the primary election occurring on March fifth of two thousand twenty-four. With the call of special election that uh is set forth in the resolution. Um the last day of call of special election for consolidation with the March fifth, two thousand twenty-four primary election is December eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Which is this Friday, which is why we do have a resolution also on the agenda. If that's the option that you want to choose to adopt this evening. If it is cool, we would then forward it to the elections department so they could consolidate uh the special election. If you recall, we have already called, the council has already called a special election for the same date, and that is to fill the vacancy on the city council. So we would have basically two special elections being consolidated um with the March fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh primary election. That has some cost benefits um because uh we get basically a two for. Normally, if we recall the special election, we would have to pay. And the cost of the special election, I wrote it down, that we received some information, I believe, at the latter part of last week. That um the the general cost of a special election, it it was not consolidated with another election. Is somewhere between fifty-eight thousand and eighty-four thousand dollars. Um and this costs more than doubles if the election is not consolidated. So in other words, if we didn't consolidate. Our special election uh on this particular matter with the March fifth, that would be a special election, that would be a standalone election. And the cost would be somewhere between a hundred and thirty-four and two hundred and one thousand dollars. So there are definitely cost benefits when uh consolidating. And uh when I say two for, since we are already going to have to pay for the uh election to fill the vacancy on the city council. We would not have to pay double that fee if we had another special election consolidated with the March fifth election. So um much like the other action, if uh the uh the voters decided not to. The way that this is phrased on the ballot is to, do you approve the uh ordinance seven sixty-five, right? It's a yes or no vote, it's a simple yes or no vote. And if the voters decided not to approve ordinance seven sixty-five. Then we would be somewhat in the same position as if we took action by way of ordinance. Um the ordinance seven sixty-five would no longer be in force in effect. We'd be back to the um. See the same situation where we uh have the at-large voting system still in place until the council either decides to take action. Or decides not to take any action and go back to the the district board all over again. So basically, as I mentioned to you, that the financial impact, again, staff is definitely recommending it if the council decides to take the the uh voting. Uh option to put it on the ballot, that we consolidate with the uh March fifth primary election in order to save money. And uh not have too many elections in a given year, because we would, uh in theory, if we didn't consolidate with that, we'd have an election on March fifth. We have a have a special election perhaps, and then maybe another election in November. Uh. I can't remember what the election date is in November, but in any event, um so again, just to reiterate, we have a referendum before you this evening. The council has two options in response to a certified referendum. Those two options are to either adopt an ordinance that will repeal. Ordinance seven sixty-five in its entirety, or the other option is to call for an election and have the uh. The question of whether or not uh resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance seven sixty-five should be approved, placed on the ballot. And um the resolution has been prepared to have that placed on the ballot at the March fifth primary act uh election. In other words, to be consolidated with that general state and county election that will be occurring on March fifth.
All right, thank you. Um so now we're gonna go ahead and take out a couple of comments. We'll start with chambers, you hear the side of chambers here. Uh we'll start with a. I got spokesperson for, so that's.
Good evening, mayor. Um councilor, mayor for him and the community, my name is. And on behalf of the Solidad Community Committee for Voting Rights, I stand before you to ask the council to repeal ordinance seven sixty-five. Establishing and implementing the five district map that overturns and strips our residents' right to elect a mayor. In two thousand and three, Solidad residents passed measure C, which allowed voters to elect a mayor at large. Voters approved it by almost ninety percent. It is the only, it is the only city in the county, to my knowledge, that has a certain right to be elected mayor at large on the ballot. This sentiment was against reiterated in overwhelming support for the referendum, in which we were able to collect fourteen hundred signatures in twenty-three days. That's almost twenty percent of the city's voter populations. This council should not ignore that fact. We want to continue to elect our mayor at large. May I remind this council that the city is still liable for litigation should this issue be unnecessarily extended? Today, you have the opportunity to repeal ordinance seven sixty-five and move towards the adoption. Of of a four district map that respects the voters' rights to continue to elect a mayor at large. May I also remind this council, specifically council members. That they are stewards of the resources of this city, and forcing us to put the referendum on the ballot will not only cost the city thousands of dollars. But also further jeopardize the city to be sued for not making significant progress towards the implementation of district elections. Council members, council members. You don't want to regret to the city, right? Today, you have the opportunity, no, the obligation, to respect the voters and repeal ordinance seven sixty-five. We know for the fact that the five district map was not the most equitable map of the five district proposed. It was one of, had one of the highest deviations from ideal and ideal in terms of population distribution. It was the only map that created a vacancy and that it did, that map previously existed on the council. You favored this most controversial map, there was no reason that you could. In previous council meetings, my mayor told him he managed that that he opposed district elections because the city was too small for districts. Yet he felt the smaller districts will be a better option. You also said you disagree how rule can impose district elections on the city, yet you sit here and impose a very unpopular five district map. Council for Alejo Jimenez, we all make mistakes in judgment, and you have the opportunity here to make matters on yours. We expect you to do the right thing and repeal ordinance seven sixty-five, and in a continued effort to stop gerrymandering over voting system. The Solidad Committee for Voting Rights will continue to advocate for fair and equitable representation in the city council. We ask the council to repeal seven sixty-five. I mean, it it is not in alignment with the majority of the voices of the residents of the city of Solidad. Repeal ordinance seven sixty-five. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Uh Fernando?
Hello, good evening again. Um Fernando, I'm solid, I'm resident of Solidad. I'm here to request that the city council repeals ordinance seven sixty-five and moves towards an at-large election system. For the mayoral position and adopt a four district map. Back in September, nearly fifty residents spoke in support of a four district map and an at-large name. The majority of the council at that time chose to not listen to the majority of the residents speaking up and to say they're passing the five district map. Solidad residents mobilized and they collected uh one thousand three hundred and eighty-three signatures supporting an at-large mayor and a four district map. I am requesting that the council takes this into consideration and appeals ordinance seven sixty-five and adopts a four district map with an elected mayor at large. Moving this to a ballot will be costly. I'd rather the city save that money and use it towards much of the day, so it says, thank you.
Thank you. Morgan?
Good evening, council. My name is Margaret Setan Alvenidi, and you'll excuse me. But you know, I I'm gonna ask off with it to repeal seven sixty-five. When I was here last. Um I suggested that this council um put aside all your differences. And go with the Voting Rights Act, because it's historically, Solidad is long overdue on this. And it isn't about, as I said at that time, it wasn't about whether you all belong to a protected class, it's about stakeholders. And um I think there was a lot of anger in this decision. And it's really unfortunate, because Solidad, there's a lot of amor here, you know, there's a lot of cultura, there's familia. I have history here, my husband is from this area, I still have family in this area. And it's really sad that it's gotten to this point, because it it's turned out to be very divisive, you know, kind of like sour grapes, you know? Um a map proposed by my former buddy, uh the former mayor, and. I'm gonna ask this council to make a decision using wisdom. Not anger, not political alignments, but wisdom, one in which looks at the. Your constituents, who you serve. Because in the decision that you made, you kind of went dragging, kicking and dragging instead of be fine, we'll do this. We're gonna give you this, but we're gonna take this back. And that violates the spirit of the Voting Rights Act, because the whole point of Voting Rights Act is to give the decisions to the voters. So prior, they could just sort of decide on two things, their council representatives. And a mayor, but what you did was you gave him a decision that said, you could pick us as council members, but we're taking this back. And we're gonna impose an authoritarian style of electing the mayor. And that in itself is a legal problem that can be taken part of, but why do that? Why spend all this money? And why not just say, you know what? I'm in, I'm gonna make the right decision by the city of Solidad. And not spend this additional money and not cause more division, but just move forward. Repeal this, take a look at a new map, not drag this out another year, not cause more problems and not. Do political alignments, because every single person here, I know that when you took the oath, you took the oath to do what was best for your constituents. Now what was best for the person who called you on the phone and said, you know, I don't like this, or I don't like losing. Anybody who's ever lost an election, as I have, knows that you move on, you can still be involved in your community. You don't have to be calling the shots from outside of city hall and reaching into city hall and taking away the votes and taking away. The voice of your community, because that's what this has turned out to be, it's really sad, I have to do the right thing, thank you, thank you.
Those are the only cards I have. Anyone else in the chamber? I understand we have some on Zoom, so can we go ahead and start first? Lupita? Hello, Lupita?
Yes, hello, thank you.
You're you're on.
Hello, my name is Lupita Royo. Thank you, mayor and city council members. I'm a lifelong resident of Solidad. I'm asking to repeal ordinance seven hundred and sixty-five and adopt the four district map. The people have spoken, please listen. How many more signatures will we have to take and provide um to, for the people to get what they ask? I'm proud of Solidad, I'm proud of how they have uh really spoken up about their needs and their wants, and I think it's important for. Uh the community to get involved, and they have, that's what you you all have been asking for, and they have, so please listen and. Uh if not, then you know, it's costing the city a lot of money. This is not for their best interest, so please listen and please adopt a four district map. Gracias.
Thank you. Hello, Eva?
Hi.
Hi. How you doing?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, uh mayor and council. My name is Eva Vista Banuelos. I live on two eighty-nine Fourth Street, Soledad. And I'm part of the Solidad Committee for Voting Rights. I say, let your voice be heard. How? Well, let me say this first before I proceed. To all my friends who signed a referendum during the month of October, thank you, thanks so, so much. Your voice is being heard and moving forward, your voice will continue to be heard. Council, I am asking from you to please repeal ordinance si- seven sixty-five. And retain four districts along with the mayor at large, so we, so we, the Solidad residents can vote for our mayor. Doesn't matter who the mayor will be, but we want to vote for our mayor. If you don't reconsider, then we will continue to make noise by continuing to collect another. If you don't reconsider, then we will continue to make noise by continuing to collect another, the next ballot. Let me say this. I'm not here to point fingers and I don't mean any harm to, to, to your personal feelings. I am sharing this to please, please do the right thing and, and be the community minded and think about community and give back. Again, I'm gonna repeat myself. Be community minded and think about our community and give back. Do we want to really waste city money on this? I don't. I know all of you are present here on Zoom and watching live, but let's not waste cities' money. I am not alone in this and I, and I am a community minded and oriented. And I love to give back, so let's give back, you guys, together and repeal the ordinance seven sixty-five, thank you.
Thank you. One more time?
Chris, Chris. Hello, can you hear me?
Mr. R, go ahead.
Wonderful, uh, good evening, uh, mayor of Valescas and city council. Lula twenty fifty-five strongly supports the efforts of the community of Solidad. To repeal ordinance seven sixty-five of adopting the five district map with the rotating mirror, which represents voter suppression. Please allow the voters of Solidad to vote for who they want as their mayor. Everyone deserves the right to vote for the mayor. You are supposed to represent your constituents. It is obvious what the residents of Solidad wants and they have spoken by collecting over four, fourteen hundred signatures. And do not want to be held captive by previous administrations. Lula twenty fifty-five asks that the city council votes and supports what the community really wants. Please put the community of Solidad number one and do what is right, and thank you.
Thank you.
Got, uh, Jose?
Jose? Good evening.
Yes, good evening, council. Um, my name is Jose Riola, I am a resident here of Solidad, I'm raising my family. Um, of three girls here in this wonderful city and we have so much to be proud of. Uh, I hope we do not prolong the inevitable. Um, and that we take, the council take action tonight and I urge you to take action tonight to repeal ordinance seven sixty-five. And restore, uh, the will of the people to vote for their own mayor and the districts and we can get back to. Uh, the track we were on to try to come up with the new district map. Again, I urge you, council, to repeal seven sixty-five and not push this to an election, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, London?
One more time?
London?
London?
Yeah.
London, I apologize.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is London Tarver, I'm the president of the Monterey County Branch in ACP. I support the residents of Solidad with the four district map. And we hope you will respect the rights of the citizens of the city of Solidad. And repeal ordinance seventy sixty-five, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we got, uh, Junior, you?
Junior, hello? Junior, you're on the line, you gotta mute, unmute?
I'm muted, but I don't.
Alright, so, Junior, still there? We'll give you a chance to, oh, there you go, there you go, yeah, go ahead, Junior.
Hello, uh, council and pro temp and also mayor, um, uh, this is Junior Nuneo, I've, um, a long time resident, grew up in Solidad. Um, I just have a, a couple of comments. I am, I'm very disappointed. In the residents in our community that says that we are here to support our community. This process, if everybody looks back. From the beginning, has not been unit, uniting the community. All you guys did was separate this community, it, it tore it apart. We're all gonna have differences all the time. But with this districting it by itself is not just costed the, the city money, but it's divided the community. And now that people see that, that, uh, people need to see that this is not about redistricting. This is about your votes, right? But that's actually what you are losing is your right to vote by districting. Because now, everybody in their own district can only vote for that one person, for that one district. Not at large, if there's three positions and I'm kind of like hitting the dead horse on the head. If there's three openings and they're not in your district, guess what? You cannot vote. And people are misunderstanding that or being misled, that it's all about your votes, that about the mayor. Well, how about, how about the city council members? I mean, how about those other three seats or other two seats that always rotate? How is that not taking my vote away, my right? And I need people, really want people to understand that. It's not about one position, it's about all the county, I mean, all the, all the, the city and all the community. We're all being divided, all because one position or one agenda? And we as a community need to stop and think, how are we going to build our community, not divided? And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Junior.
Okay, we got one more, is, uh, Frank, what we doing?
Frank? Hello, Frank?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you?
Yeah.
You're breaking up back in the tree.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, yeah, I, I agree with what Junior says, but the thing is. Uh, my first question, I'm gonna try to do this real quick, you guys said you got. Almost two thousand votes, but you only turned in eight hundred and forty signatures, so.
Frank, if I may, if I may, Frank? Uh, wanna keep it towards the council, uh, the questions or, or the direction of your.
I'm sorry.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so, so there was only eight hundred and forty signatures, not twenty-four hundred or fourteen hundred. Um, the other thing too is like, if there's not a decision made, all of you that brought this, brought this upon this year. You decided to, to cost the city money, not, not the council, you, you did. You did when you, when you didn't, when you didn't, you know, just respect the vote. It's, it's, it's democracy. Also, now. Anybody right now that if you don't like what is decided today? Tomorrow, you can call a lawyer and you can sue the city. So now, even if we do go to this, you know, this decision where you're gonna have to vote on the, on the referendum. The city is open to one of the biggest lawsuits, one of the biggest lawsuits, like in California probably. And you still like, you still don't care. You don't care if, you, your members don't care if you break your city. Anybody, even any, any one of you can just go and, I'm not happy with, with the way the district voting is going. It's not done yet. And then you're gonna break your city. And that's like, that's horrible. Because, you know, you, but you, you wanna keep trying and, and that's okay, but I, you know, I wanna thank Lula for, for, you know, doing that, but. I guess with the five districts, it, you know, it gives everybody that right to run and. It gives more equity, I, I, I think that's what I like about it, is the equity. I don't have to call two or three people, I can only call one or two and. I don't know if any of you do any, um, community stuff, but. I like the fact that I wouldn't have to call all the council members, ask them permission to do something or pitch them an idea about something that I wanna do in the community. I like the fact that I can maybe call two. And then I can concentrate on what I wanna do for the community. And then, you know, it still goes to council and hopefully they, you know, they vote on it. That, that's what I like about it, I like that you don't need a lot of money, that's, and that's also what I like about it, but. What I don't like is. Who is gonna cash out on that money? Who is, who is, somebody is gonna, you know, you, you're putting the city at jeopardy.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you for the call, any other?
That's everyone, dude.
I mean, um, Darlene has three, um, email requests.
Alright, so we also have some written correspondence that, uh, Art Flotter, gonna read?
Sorry, there was four, sorry.
Four?
This is from Leamaro Ortiz. I urge the council to repeal ordinance seven sixty-five and not waste city money. Even Ana Velazquez as city mayor, as her accomplishments and public awareness are beyond approach. She respects all civil and public activities, thank you. This is from President Gonzalez. Taxation without representation is death, don't be fake. The people should always have the right to choose, fix it. This is from Sam Gomez. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Sam Gomez and I am a resident of sixteen hundred block of Bastia Avenue here in Solidad. I am writing to ask you to consider repealing ordinance seven sixty-five as it would greatly cost the city funds to put it on the ballot. I am asking you, our city council, to consider repealing the ordinance and adopting the four district map. As it would honor the request of roughly one thousand four hundred registered voters here in Solidad. Based on the referendum that was put before you, please listen to your constituents at this time, thank you very much for your time. This is from Christina Longoria. Good evening, mayor and city council, my name is Christina Longoria and I'm a resident of the city of Solidad. I am writing to ask you to consider repealing ordinance seven sixty-five and save the city funds that can be directed to other central services for the community. I am asking you, our city council, to consider repealing the ordinance and adopting the four district map. That they would give lifetime residents and registered voters like me peace of mind that I would be able to elect my own mayor. Please listen to your constituents at this time, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll bring it back to the council now. Um, now, if there's any other touch of comment, not that I see. Alright, council, um, for discussion.
I got one more person, just raise their hand.
Sure, we'll take the last one.
Hello?
Hello?
Uh, good evening, city council and mayor. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit, I wanted to touch a little bit on B two. I've been a resident at Solidad for twenty-two years now. Um, Solidad has been my town and will always be, uh.
Can I, can I ask you your name real quick?
My name is Haido Garcia, um, I've been a resident for Solidad for twenty-two years.
Thank you.
Solidad is my hometown and it will always be. Uh, I am asking to repeal ordinance seven sixty-five and adopt, uh, a four district map. Uh, Solidad has the right to vote, uh, thank you for your time and have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Alright, seeing that there's no more public comment.
I don't see anyone else there, anyways.
We're gonna bring it back to the council and coun- council, we're, um, go ahead and, uh. Discuss the issue and, uh, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna start with our, our Zoom, the one that's not in the chamber and, uh. Mayor Valescas, let's start with you.
Yep, um, thank you, Chair. Uh, before I start, I do wanna make sure that I, I, I have our city attorney provide us with some information. I'm, you know, really exhausted of a lot of the misinformation that's, uh, been provided, uh, in regards to this, um, item. So one of the misinformation that I, that I heard today was that, um, people can always sue the city. In fact, this is, could be one of the biggest lawsuits in the city of Calif- and the state of California. Um, Mike, can you help us address that so that we people understand and there's clarity? I wanna make sure that people are making decisions based on data and information and not based on misinformation that, that others are providing. Um, so I, I believe that, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the, you know, regardless of who brought the districting lawsuit. To us, we are here. And the fact is that the twelve cities in Monterey County have districts, so we're nothing special, all of the other cities have done it. Ours is just, went different, but we're not in jeopardy of being sued, or are we? Because we've already established the districts, what's in content, then contention now is not whether we're districted or not districted. But it's a disagreement in terms of how the mayor is elected, so can you help me and help our, our, uh, residents understand what is real and what is not?
I have, I'm sorry, kind of order, I just have a question, I thought we were not allowed to respond to public comments made by our.
I'm not, I'm not responding to public comments, I'm asking a question for clarity.
So, alright, so.
I show what's for staff.
Alright, let's bring back and we'll go ahead and let the mic go ahead and speak. Yeah, one of the things is there's been a couple of suggestions, comments, uh, folks in favor of the four district map and so forth, and urging you to adopt the four district map. That is a question for another day, that is not before the city council this evening. The question before the city council this evening is to, um, um, whether or not, uh, the process for, uh, acting on the referendum, whether or not to put it on the ballot? Or whether or not to take action by way of ordinance to repeal it. Once that ordinance is repealed, we will have no districting policy in the city, we will not have an approved districting policy. And so, my understanding, at least my interpretation of the comments we received, we received a couple of comments talking about potential future litigation. Was, we're directed at that matter, that if we don't have a districting po- uh, policy or process in place, um, at some future date. We run the risk of being sued, just like we did back in October of two thousand twenty-two, when we first started this process under a threat of litigation. And that would be that if we don't then move forward with adopting, uh, a four district map, then, uh, we would be subject to potential litigation. Thank you. Uh, any other? Mayor? You're on mute, I have you, you?
Oh, can you hear me now, sorry?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I had that question, thank you for answering that. Um, so I'll go ahead and just make my comments and obviously, you know, I've made comments on this over the last couple of, of months and, um, just. A- a- and I just wanna say that this process has been difficult, it has been divisive. But it also has not been equitable, um, a- and, you know, I'll, I'll keep my comments to what I've said before, which are, um, not different than my sentiments in the past. That this wasn't and has not been about what's in the best interest of the people of Solidad. This has been with the adoption of the five district map, which by the, which, as you've heard many times, was not the most equitable. And it was one that was brought forth by former, um, mayor, uh, Fred Ledesma. And looking at the other maps, um, when we were having these discussions. I was trying to look at what was equitable for our community and which maps represented most of that equitability. And the five district map that was, uh, approved was not. Um, we also have a fiduciary responsibility, that's one of the main things that we know for anyone that is a council member. That our responsibility is also to make sure that we're not wasting our taxpayer dollars and that we're not being irresponsible. With how the money is being utilized in the city of Solidad. And so for me, is going through this process has been exhausting. Um, it has been very contentious, but I'm at the point where my job and the job of us as councils is to look at what's in the best interest of the people. And for me, I cannot and I will not support, uh, moving forward with one, an item that is disenfranchises our voters. Is voter suppression? And now it's costing the city money, because now we're gonna have to fight something that traditionally, these are the foundations of our freedom, the foundations of our democracy. And now we're saying we're gonna waste taxpayer dollars on, um, putting something on the ballot, um, that we know the voters are not going to approve. Um, the voters have spoken many times in this chamber, the voters have, you know, time after time have said this is not what they want. And I wanna make it clear that, that, you know, this is not about me as a mayor, because I'm not gonna be the mayor, um, forever, but it, but you know, what, what, for me, it is about. Um, that future of those, that youth step-up mentoring program, when I was with those youth. I'm part of the civic engagement, the excitement that I saw in their eyes when they sat in that chair that you're sitting in right now, Mayor Protem. And they had to select their mayor and they were so excited to be able to select the mayor of their choice. That for me is, is fundamental in why the freedoms that we have are so critical. Um, and the voices of the people, you know, are critical, we are tasked with listening to our community. Um, and we've heard them all time and time again that this is not what they want. And for me is, I am ready to, uh, repeal ordinance seven sixty-five in its entirety. Um, a- and let's really. Um, a- and let's really make sure that we're focusing on what's in the best interest of the people and not what's in the political interest of, of individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, I actually wanted to start out, um, you know, uh, first with a question to our city attorney, um, and you may or may not have this information, so I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I'm just curious and I would also like our community to know, um, out of the a thousand four hundred signatures that were collected on the referendum, um, by any chance, do you know how many of their sig- of those signatures were valid? I, you know, were there any that were not valid, not registered voters, or that were duplicates?
Yes, um, and I referenced that in the staff report of the, the Monterey County Register of Voters, uh, certified that there were eight hundred and sixty-two ballot signatures. So of the petitions and the signatures that were submitted, eight hundred and sixty-two were valid signatures. Now, there's a variety of different reasons that, uh, the register voters would, uh, discount the other signatures. People either were not registered, or there could have been duplicates, or there could have been, uh, something wrong with their signature. They couldn't verify one way or the other. But they did verify that of the, uh, petition that was submitted and all of the, uh, signatures that were submitted, that eight hundred and sixty-two were valid signatures of voters, registered voters in the city of Salida.
What, do you know what percent approximately that might be? I think it's ten percent. Okay, awesome. So not twenty percent. Okay, thank, thank you so much, Mike. And again, I apologize for throwing that out here.
Point of information, just in that, I was recently, I was recently in the, in the office of elections and.
Are you dead?
No, that was just my question. So just to go along with that, um, I did have some comments. I, I, along with the mayor, this has been exhausting for me. I know it has been exhausting for our, all our families, all our friends, all our staff. And I know for everybody that's here, and I see a lot of familiar faces that have been coming regularly, and I really sincerely mean it. I appreciate, you know, you guys, uh, you know, taking, um, interest and, and caring so much about your city that you're coming, you know, when you could be home. It's cold, it's dark. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, um. And, and I am honestly just exhausted, uh, you know, like everyone else, um, but what I did wanna say was, um, for, for me, it's real important that obviously there's still a, uh, we're still open to litigation at the end of the day, and that's the reason that from the beginning, even before, prior to me even being on the council, the council, you know, back then voted and decided, you know, not initially, at first they didn't want districting, but they initially, you know, decided that they had no choice. They had to protect the city from li- from liability. Um, and, you know, uh, for me, that's, that's when the city would still be at, at liability, I think for me also. Um, in order for, for all the constituents, I think, you know, should be, should be heard and not just ten percent. Ten percent is great. That's huge. I know that was a huge effort. Um, but I, I really would like to hear from a hundred percent of our registered voters. And, and see what is it that they want. We're speaking so much, you know, about, um, equity, about suppressing people's vote. And, you know, I think that, that the right thing, um, I, I think is to allow all our, all our voters, um, you know, to be able, uh, to vote. It, it is, you know, again, it is gonna be an expense. I think we're all aware of that. Um, but at the same time, if we consolidate it with the empty or the vacant seat that we have right now in our council, um, obviously that's gonna save us, uh, thousands of dollars, but really I think a- at this point for me, you know, i- if we take it to vote, hopefully it'll, it'll stop divisions. And I know families, um, that I, that some, you know, individuals that support me, and not everyone in their family does, and it literally has gone in to the point where it was making, uh, you know, um, I guess bringing, bringing issues to, to their families. And it's like the holidays are coming, you know, and even if the holidays are not coming, that's not, that's not what I want, you know. Um, I, I really want our city to come together. I wanna hear from all of our registered voters. And, and even if you're not registered, this is the perfect time to register. Um, you could go online and do it. And I think consolidating again, you know, would be perfect. And I don't see that as a, as a wasted money. I really see it as an investi- investment in our democracy and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, uh, Council.
Just, uh, for, for information for our, our residents, the, I recently was, uh, submitting my documents for, uh, to run for a committee, uh, central committee. And I asked directly to them, wha- what is the process? Cause I, I had to present twenty signatures and I presented thirty. Well, once they reach the twenty, they don't continue verifying because we met the requirement. So just because we have eight hundred and sixty, that doesn't mean that all the other ones were not verified. They were not verified because.
You know, in, in this particular case, the register of voters, they did.
So one, one more point, even if that is the case, some of that, some of the, the signatures, if there is a little slight, um, maybe that, that, that signature is a little bit off, that is the case. That doesn't mean that, that there were duplicates or any difference in there's the duplicates. In any case, I checked, when I was running for this, uh, position, I checked in, uh, I believe it was four or five previous elections during, um, during the, uh, presidential e- elections, which is the one that would come in, only about three thousand people voted. Uh, less than two thousand for the, 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 the other election. So when we ask for a hundred percent, that has never happened in Salida. We're not divisive. Fifteen hundred people against two people, uh, is not, is not divisive. It is a message that we are ready to do anything. And we are in an election year. Just because, um, because, uh, a festival is come, that, that's not gonna work. You know, you have, we have the obligation to reconcile a city. Just because somebody tells me that I'm not divisive, that doesn't make it true. Just because one person says that we are divisive, you cannot say that one person that makes a comment that will advise it against fifteen hundred. Come on, give me a break. I mean, what is gonna take for us to come together and make a decision that meets the needs of our people? Cause we're not here to make special, uh, treatments, you know. We're not here to comply with family members or with compadres. We're not here to do that. We're here to comply with the, with, with the will of the pe- the people has spoken. And we'll speak again in March and we'll speak again in November. So let's repeal that. Let's repeal and move forward instead of keeping that, that discord with families. That tells you something. If families are getting separated, that's not the sport. Is that we have to take a closer look and reconcile our people and say, you know what? We're not gonna, we're not, I'm okay with not mentioning the four districts, but, but we have to repeal and move forward in this, so that we can have a conversation about what to do next. In any case, whether it is the repeal or sending it to elections, the risk of the city is still the same. We still have the same risks. It's not gonna change if we vote for an election. Right, Mike?
Uh, no, and, and the risk will only be when either one of these actions takes effect, sadly. So why wait another year?
Does, ba- based on the, uh, arguments, against not repealing is the almighty, uh, or supposed lawsuit that we are facing. But that, that risk is the same whether we repeal or we send to elections. That's the same. The risk is gonna be there. And if we postpone this longer, the risk will continue. It's not gonna change. So it's up to us to make a decision now and move forward. Cause I don't wanna have another two hours of discussing the same thing. You know, we have, we have fifty, fourteen hundred people that express their need. And we still get phone calls asking, do you still need signatures? We saw family members, entire families gathering their neighbors because they want to do something. They want to be heard. You know, when we mentioned fourteen hundred, they are, those are the signatures of fourteen hundred. We don't, I don't just come and say tons of people, but nobody shows up, you know. I think that we ought to the city just move forward and make a change.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give my, my comments on this as well. Um, I'll look at all the, here and tell you, I'm sick of this. This is, uh, I've had it. Just because of the fact that it's, uh, you know, it's politically motivated, it's, uh, political ambition, um, is, is what's at the core of this. And we wouldn't be in this situation if Lula didn't push us to this spot. And whether you guys wanna say no or yes, I understand that because under the Voter Rights Act, if you, if you research it and do yourself, which I have as well, and I, I don't know if we really fall into that, that we would really have to pay up money and lose that suit. So, but, you know, because of that threat of the suit, and whether it's Lula, it could be anybody now can sue us. Now, anybody can sue us if they want because we haven't moved forward with it. So we have to make a decision what we wanna do. So the reason it came to refer to me was because the people said, you did not listen to us. You did not want the four districts and let us elect our mayor. You wanted five. And the basis behind the five is that they're smaller districts. It'd be less costly to, uh, to, uh, run for an election. Just like, um, you know, when you ran, when you ran, when I ran, uh, we had to run the whole city, right? You had to run the whole city, so you had to raise a little bit more money. And it may, may not, you may have not been able to afford to do that. With districting, you're gonna be able to afford it. Uh, well, you should be, hopefully, uh, you will be able to do that. But now it's at the point that you went out and there's eighty-four hundred registered voters. And you're right, that not all hundred percent vote. I'll tell you, I do, and I'm sure many in this room do as well, but not everybody does. Unless there are, there's some that manage to them. So we have ten percent that weigh in. I may not agree on totally on the tactics that was utilized to acquire a little bit under sixty-two or fourteen hundred signatures because of other people share with me as well, um, is the way they're being approached. And so, but understanding that, I, I think that in the effort not to suppress the vote, to listen to the people, um, to go ahead and give them and let them weigh in, we need to take it to an election. That, that's where we are now. That is, uh, in a righteous place. There's, uh, we're not gonna have any outbursts at this point. We're having an opportunity to talk. And, uh, right now it's, uh, Council's comment section. So, um, that is my feeling. And you know what's unfortunate? That, this is my third term. And, uh, I've never seen it like this before, the new, new style. And it's, it's, it's way different. It's different because, you know, neighbors are attacking neighbors or, or, and I'm, I'm saying verbally, verbally, uh, as far as those things. Because they are approaching me as well. And so therefore, um, we need to move it forward. Let's move forward. Let's take it out to the voters, let them weigh in, and then once it's done, it's done. And then we go from there. So that's my opinion. So at this time, um, and so any further comments, we're looking for motion. Anybody have a motion they'd like to?
To the chair, I wanna make my last comment.
Sure.
And I wanna, I, I think you're right. Uh, I won't, I, I have to give you that. It was, it was, um, a politically, um, drive driven. And it was, uh, three people trying to support a former mayor's idea, which is your brother-in-law. Let me, no, no, I'm going, you are access the same. Did I say anything to the specific? Well, I'm, 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 I'm making a comment in the, in the comments that you make. Because that is the point, is your brother-in-law, uh, your nearest compadre. That's what you guys wanna, but send it to, send it to the, to the voters. So that the voters know who is, who, who they have.
No more comments from the audience, please. We're, we're trying to maintain the decorum here. No, 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 shorting shoulders. No more comments from the audience, please.
Point of, point of, uh, information, um, in a previous meeting, a council member from Green Hill interrupted several times and you never say anything.
Right, and, and we decided that we were going to try to maintain the corner better after that meeting.
At, at this point in time, we're indicating a motion. If somebody would like to bring a motion forward.
So Mayor, uh, Chair, I, you said a last comment, so before we. Yeah, so I wanna make, I wanna say my last comments as well. So, I mean, and I'm gonna address, cause Mike, I think it's important. We're having a discussion and as part of the discussion, um, you know, we're gonna get uncomfortable and that's okay, as long as it doesn't get personal. But, but there was, you know, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on my, um, on what's said, at least in terms of Mayor Pro Tem about political ambition. I'm not here for political ambition. And so I wanna make sure that the community is clear on that, um, that there has been really a lot of divisiveness. And I haven't seen it like this either, but I saw it like this when I became mayor. So I don't know you, how it was for you or when you were in your mayor position, but I, but I saw it. And I saw it a lot because there was different points of, uh, disagreements. There was different points of perspectives. And that's okay because we don't always need to go with the status quo. But I just wanna clarify for the, for all of our community members, I keep hearing this, um, uh, you know, keep hearing that the mayor's out for political ambition and this is why I'm doing it. I'm not doing it for political ambition. I serve my community. I lived in my community. I love my community. And I will continue to advocate for my community and I will continue to advocate for what's right in our community members. And our job as council is to sit in that seat and, and look at all of the different perspectives and do what's in the best interest of the community. So I just wanna make sure, um, that I say that and also in terms of the equity piece, cause that be, that continues to happen, it is equitable to go into districts. Because as, as I said before, there was only traditionally a handful of people that sat in those council seats. That if either you had political or financial power, you were not sitting in those seats. So the process of going through districts is gonna help more people that are not financially or politically, um, you know, part of the process, that they can run for office and that their voice matters. And then we also have many of the parts of the city of Salida that have not been represented. And we wanna make sure that equitable is that we represent all the components and all the questions of our city of Salida. But I also wanna remind the community in this council that now you're saying, take it out to the voters. Uh, you know, let's take it out to the voters. I'm okay with that. Uh, what I'm not okay with is having to spend eighty thou- to eighty thousand dollars because that's unnecessary. That's eighty thousand dollars that our community, that our community, um, you know, department needs for some of the activities. That's eighty thousand dollars that our victim services could be doing more out in the community. That's eighty thousand dollars that our mentorship program, our violence prevention program can have to continue to do some of the good work that they're being, that's being done. It's eighty thousand dollars that economic development can utilize to continue to help our businesses. But I wanna remind you that the last time we were in this chamber, Councilmember Cabareta did ask you, you know, let's take it out to the voters. Let's take it out to the voters, have them decide whether they want to elect the mayor or not. And you guys voted that motion down. So I just want for reference, now you're saying, you know, let's take it out to the voters. You wanna hear from the voters. We asked you to take it out to the voters and you said no. So I, I just wanna remind our public, um, that that option was presented at several meetings. Um, and, and we could have done that and we could have avoided where we're at now. Um, and we could have avoided having to spend this much money as well. So I, I think for me is, I, I wanna stop allowing the misinformation and the attacks, especially on me in terms of what my position and my political ambition is, because I'm here as a mayor. And I will continue to serve my community as a mayor because I'm serving as a mayor, not as in any other capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I do just wanna make sure is clear, um, because it's been brought up several times. There is no cost to send in this to the ballot if anything solid with the March fifth primary election. If anything solid with the March fifth primary election, because we already have the vacancy election taking place at that time. If we, uh, have the election at any other date, there will be some additional costs. But if we consolidate with the special election that we have already called for the March fifth primary date, there are no costs associated.
Through the chair, I just, um, last, last comments, I, I only gave one, I just wanted to say, you know, again, with, um, the reason that initially I had voted the way I did was because there was again that that luma, that luma litigation, which was very real. And this is based on recommendations that we got from our staff on our, on our reports that we give for council meetings, which I believe are also available for, for the public. Um, so that was for me on a, on a personal way, I voted that way. Um, now, um, you know, seeing the division in, in the city and also just, um, you know, the, the referendum that was signed, I think it is important to not suppress any of our voters', um, rights to, to vote, and so I do think it's important to do that, and now that we know that there's no cost associated with that really, because we do have, uh, the seat election coming up, um, I, I just feel that it's the right thing to do.
All right, we'll entertain a motion at this time. If none, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, refer ordinance seven six five to establish and implement by district elections and review a solid ad combined with the March fifth election.
I second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor Ambulaskis?
No.
Mayor Protem Ben Comminis Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Maria Farlaval?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
No. The motion dies, so therefore, we have it on the table. Any other motions?
I wanna make a motion that will repeal, uh, seven out sixty-five.
We're moving a motion to like appeal seven six five, so that motion is for the, uh, introduction of the ordinance that you have on the agenda this evening?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Uh, motion and a second by Mayor Velasquez. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ambulaskis?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ben Comminis Jr.?
No.
Councilmember Maria Farlaval?
No.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
Yes.
That motion also does not pass. All right, so we're at an impasse. Uh, through the attorney, what do we do next?
Um, well, I would like to urge, uh, the council members or someone to make a, a motion for reconsideration of a motion that they previously made. Um, we need to take some action. The council needs to take some action this evening. If they don't take action this evening, we will be, that's where some, some additional litigation will come up. We will be subject to a, uh, um, a mandamus action that will be brought from the court to compel the city to put the item on the, uh, the ballot. And then we will miss the date of consolidation with March fifteenth, if that had, if we wait and let that happen, which would mean that we would probably then have to pay the cost of, you know, eighty thousand or more, maybe double that amount, to have a special election to handle this issue. So I would really urge everybody to stop, pause, give it some consideration, and then think about, uh, you know, um, what they want to do. Um, but the referendum only gives us, that we have before us, only gives the council two choices. One is to repeal, and the other is to put it on the ballot. Either one is a, a victory for the folks who got petitioned together, they got the referendum before the city. They get what they want, which is the, the potential repeal of the ordinance that was put in place with the five districts. So, um, I just think everyone should take, maybe we should take a break, everybody should take a deep breath, think about it, and then we would, uh, open the floor to a motion for reconsideration of either one of the motions that was previously made, and see if maybe somebody has changed their mind after a re, uh, recess.
And do we disreel that?
Well, motion to reconsider, uh, repealing, uh, ordinance, uh, seven.
No, we got a motion for reconsideration of either one of the motions that were put before the council. One was to repeal, the other one was to put it.
On to repeal.
Right, so for clarification, um, understanding is there, is that if it goes to election and on March fifth, then there's no cost, and it moves forward that way, and the, the voters will have an opportunity. If we don't, if we're at impasse and we don't, uh, rescind it, um, then we could be sued, and then it goes on the ballot, and then we would have to pick.
That's correct.
Yes, we'll move.
So, Mike, it goes.
Yeah.
Just to clarify.
Hang on, hang on, one second, uh, we'll get to you, Mayor, right now, hang on.
Uh, through the chair, just for clarification, um, we have until the eighth to, um, forward this to the, um, elections committee, otherwise we will miss the March fifth election.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, can you just repeat the last, I want a clarification on the last statement you made in regards to um, if we re, uh, we repeal it, um, the ordinance, but if we don't make a motion, I, just help me to understand what happens if, if, if we don't make a motion? We miss the opportunity, and then it doesn't get on, then what happens, Mike?
Well, if, if the council was unable to come up with, um, uh, a majority vote for either one of the options that you have, then the, the petitioners for the referendum would more, most likely bring an action in court to compel the city to put the referendum on the, uh, ballot, right, for the, uh, the voters of the city to vote upon. Um, but if that would have to be a special election called outside of this consolidated date that we already have in place, that will be a, uh, you know, a costly decision. So, um, and we'll probably end up having to pay, I, I'm, I'm just uh, hazard you a guess here, but, uh, there will probably be an attempt to, for the folks who have to go to court to get the action compelling the city to recover their attorney's fees, since the city does have a responsibility to take one of the two actions that are before it, upon being served with a certified, uh, uh, referendum.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarification. I, I would recommend we take a pause if we can, and then we can come back.
Wow, sounds good, five minutes, five minutes, sounds good? Yeah, all right, we'll do that.
Great, thank you. We're back from our little break. Again, under consideration, the motion for reconsideration for item B two. If anybody would like to reconsider the motion.
I will take that reconsideration before we went to. I entertain, I put my request in duration of the repeal.
So we have a motion to repeal.
A motion for reconsideration.
Reconsider to adopt an ordinance repealing.
Ordinance seven sixty or seven sixty five.
Okay, a second.
You have first to say, roll call.
Mayor Anapalaskis.
Yes.
Councilmember Men, who managed junior?
No.
Councilmember Maria Flavial?
No.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
Yes. With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion for reconsideration of taking it out to. Ordinance seven sixty five to the public for district elections or for election.
So yeah, that would be a motion in favor of resolution. I don't have the number here. We put them in seven six seven. Seven fifty.
What's the right group?
I have already got. Oh, it's resolution six oh two nine, right? For reconsideration of that resolution, which would put the matter on the ballot at the March third primary.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, roll call.
Mayor Anapalaskis.
No.
Airpo ten, Ben human issue here.
Yes.
Councilmember Maria Flavial?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera?
No. Therefore, we have an impasse and seeing that there's no give up at this point. I believe the next, we should move forward with the next item on the agenda. And as any other council member had a reconsideration, one last time going back out there.
Chair, if I may just have my city attorney reiterate what this means. Because I think, I think it's important that the council knows what lays ahead if we leave at an impasse tonight.
Yeah, the, it means that we would not be able to consolidate the item with the election taking place on March fifth of two thousand twenty four. Which means that we will incur costs when the council is compelled to place the matter on the ballot. So and and we'll also probably submit some attorney's fees passed as well, but that's what it means, so.
So for clarification, we can't, until we get the suit, we can't put it on the ballot to be on the March fifth because we have that suit before the eighth. In order for that to make that happen, so we don't have any cost. But by not doing that, then by not doing that, then we're gonna look at potentially paying for the whole cost for special election, correct?
That's correct.
And and just to let council know what we're talking about now. It could be as high as two hundred thousand dollars upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. If we do not, if we do not get it on the special election for March.
And that will still go to the voters. So what we're trying to do on March fifth at no cost, we still go to the voters on a special election now. Potentially, let's do a hundred thousand, hundred thousand bucks. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's very.
One of your information. So what is the difference between repealing now and sending it to the borders? After that, I mean after that, what's gonna happen after that? If we repeal, what happened after that? And if we take it to the borders? Like, I assume that that question is gonna be, do you wanna repeal seven sixty five, right?
It's actually the flip of that. It's do you approve.
Do you approve? Okay, so, so if the people say no, we wanna, we don't wanna approve, what is next?
That would be the end of that ordinance, right? And so at that point, then the council, the city has at large elections in place. And then the council would have to decide whether or not they want to move forward with districting.
So now let's go back. If we repeal, what happened next?
Same, same thing.
Same thing, right?
Right.
So there is no difference. So the only difference that we have, that we have in the table is wait for three months or four months and go through that process when four of us can do it right now. And I wanna remind the public that in the past, for the past few months, we have asked continuously to take it to the borders. And all they said is no. Now they say yes. And after the whole town or the town, the ten percent that they wanna diminish, did all this work. They wanna be confident and say, let's just do this. So. I think that the result, whether we repeal or we take it to the borders, is gonna be the same. You just don't wanna accept that the people have spoken and the people have the right to do it. So my question is, why don't we just repeal? Because we're gonna be in the same situation. There's gonna be a year before we actually move into something else, right? Mike? Or at least that's what it says right there. So, so is, if the next, the next elections in November next year, if we repeal, it's gonna be a large over, right?
Not necessarily, because you have between now and that election to decide if you want to adopt a board district map and then go back to the district name.
But if you continue like this, it could go on for a year.
You could, you could. In theory, if you were unable to get it on the ballot or so forth and you don't repeal, you could be in a situation where the elections in November, you would have, you know, the at large because of the fact that the existing ordinance seven sixty five is just in advance. It just sits there. It's not an unfortunate fact, yeah.
So reality, who is, who is putting the risk of two hundred thousand dollars?
Um, Chair, if I may, if there's no action tonight, that's where we're heading. So I think we need to be clear that there needs to be a, a majority vote either way. Otherwise, if we leave here tonight, we've missed the window for the, the election and we will incur those costs. So I think that's why the city attorney and I are kind of imploring that you reconsider because that's where we're heading right now.
So, Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you for stating that. So I just, just for, you know, again, I understand what you're saying, May, and I understand the city attorney. I think my frustration is probably what I'm hearing in council member Cabrera is that we, we've been asking for the process to take it out to the voters, and I think that's what's been really, what's, what's really hard here tonight. Is that that's what we had been asking for in the past and that was not okay. And now we're being asked, at least, you know, myself, I'll speak for myself, I'm being asked now to say, now we wanna take it to the voters because now, now we wanna hear from everybody. Now, now we wanna, after this referendum came forth, now we wanna hear from everybody. And I have a hard time swallowing that when that was put on the table and the council repealed that and didn't even take that into consideration. And and I get it, you know, half of me is really, you know, what I said today is we're tasked, you know, if you look at our responsibilities as a council, is that fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're being good stewards of our public money? Because that's my taxpayer money. That's everybody's taxpayers' money that's watching this meeting tonight. And all those voters and all those residents of our city that pay taxes. So the council could do the right thing, not based on political motivation, but really based on what's in the right of the people. And so for me, it's really hard to see, sit here and have this discussion and be at this impasse when it hasn't been about what's in the best interest of the people. Because it's been about what's politically motivated by individuals in this council. And I'm just, you know, it's exhausting and I understand what our options are, but I also have a hard time accepting that we're being pushed into a corner now to accept to go back out to the voters when that's what we've asked initially. And that's what two of the council members are, you know, and former council member Chavez said no. So I get that we're in an impasse and I get that we're gonna have to incur more money, which is not okay. That's not what we wanna do. So I really wanna make sure that we all take into consideration. And that, you know, I, let's think about what's really in the best interest of the people and why do we need to go back out to the voters? Why do we need to go back out to the voters when that's not what you wanted to begin with? And when the voters have said, this is what, we don't want you to vote for our mayor, we wanna do it. I wanna vote for my mayor. I don't need the council to do it for me. So I'm just, for me, it's really hard and, and I'm torn between, you know, I get it in terms of the funding and what that's gonna mean to the city. But I think in principle, it's really hard for all those voters that came here day after day, that went out there and got those signatures. For us now to be put into, you know, essentially being backed up into the corner to say, oh, now let's take it out to the voters now because it benefits, because it benefits, you know, who? So.
You didn't? Oh, go ahead.
So with that, in terms of where we're at, I don't know if there's any, any further comments, and I would like to make just the final. Chair, if anybody, if there's no other comments from the council and then we can move on.
Would you have another comment for now?
Yes, um, yes, thank you. Through, through the chair, I just wanted to speak for myself. I have, I actually kinda laugh because it's ironic. I always say that I don't consider myself a politician. I, this is my first year on, on council and I have actually enjoyed it quite a bit and then some things not so much. But what I did wanna say is at this point, and I've said it, you know, before, I, I don't know what my, you know, aspirations are when it comes to, you know, whether I wanna run again for office or not. And I will make that decision as I get closer to, to that time. But what I, so I have no, no political reasons or, you know, or any alliances, any decisions that I make are based on what I sincerely think is best for our community. You know, with that said, I did wanna say, I think everyone, we're all human and we all change what we think. You know, based on either things that change, circumstances that change for us in our family or things that change in the community. Or just, you know, different information that, that we see or different results that, that we have seen. And a great example of that is, you know, our mayor, who was actually the only person, I believe, who, who wanted to do the, the districting because there was real litigation, you know, that, that was presenting our, our city and, and I believe that's what was said back then. And, you know, with that said, I, I really wanna give people the right to vote all a hundred percent, not just ten percent or not just twenty percent, but let's allow everyone in our city to vote. It seems that that's the way it's gonna go regardless. March fifth, at least, will save our community, our city, two hundred thousand dollars so that we could use that public, those public funds on things that, that really matter. We have a huge homeless issue. It has grown. Since I've been here, it has probably doubled. We, you know, have a lot of different programs. We have a lot of great things coming to our city. We have a lot of affordable, two affordable housing projects that are gonna be coming up to our city council. And so, you know, let's, I really would like to move on. Save those two hundred thousand dollars and, and invest that into our community.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll, I'll make my brief and, and just, just to the point. For me, it's, it's a situation that initially that I did not want districting. I said this town did not need districting. It's too small. But yet, they brought it forward anyway. And I'll just leave it at that and say they, and I know, I'm guilty of times of being too kind and not dropping names and doing that. But you know what? That's, that's not me and that's not my character. But what is my character is this, that, you know, you wanna talk about matter of principle, you wanna talk about what's right for the community. You wanna talk about giving voters a voice, and we have this opportunity to do that now. Whether, you know, no matter what this council does, that if it's not in those that don't get their way, then it's, it's your fault or it's our fault that disagree. This is my third term. It's on other councils and where we might have disagreed, but we always agreed for, to do what's best for this community. And we've done some really great things. And oddly enough, that, you know, we still are doing some pretty good things right now. And for us to take it out there and to let it go to a special election, to spend two hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's, you know, that's brought upon those that brought the referendum forward and the group that's supporting them. And so therefore, we can end that tonight, right now, and just say, no cost, we move forward. If that's what the voters want, there it is. It's done. It's done. There's no more questions. Well, I think maybe, there's no, I think maybe, it's done. And we just move forward. And then as being stewards of, of the city and trying to do what's best interest, you look at smaller districts, they came to us. Smaller districts, better participation. Smaller district, people without money can also run too. Better accountability in their district, that they know their neighborhoods, they know their problems, they know the people that they're talking to. So it gets more people involved and now it's saying, well, wait, 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 we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we don't wanna give them the vote anymore. Let's just end it right now. And so now, we're here now. Let's do it. It's not gonna cost us any money. Put on March fifth on a special election and with also the election of the new council person. And then we're done and we move forward. And then hopefully we can find some, you know, some common ground and most of the time, actually, we do find common ground on the stuff for the city. But for whatever reason, oh, there's a few reasons, but this is where we're at. And it appears to the this is where we're at. And it appears as though we're in an impasse. We're at an impasse. And so the choice that's being made is that those that don't want to take it to an election are willing to have the city pay two hundred thousand dollars to do a special election. That's what it's at.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, um, through the chair, uh, I just want to remind everybody that um, the only people that worked to get to this point was all those fifteen hundred people. And the committee for uh, voting rights. Those people went out there in the cold, were visiting people, were uh, talking about what is the purpose of that, and they gathered fourteen hundred people. That is a vote. The people saw the vote for that. We didn't, we didn't, we're not, we're not, we're not saying don't send it to the people because we already sent it to the people. In the past, we requested this. I made that motion three or four times. You said no. You said no, and all of a sudden, because it's convenient uh, for you, because there is the hope, uh, they said, yes, let, let adopt that. Because there is the blind hope that they can do it. Now we want to send it to the people, but we already sent it. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't come to this by just talking to ourselves. We came with fourteen hundred people in the town. And that's not, if you would have given us another month, we could probably have five thousand people, five thousand signatures. You haven't provided nobody in the town, except some relatives. Top of them. Those fifteen hundred people are not my relatives. They voiced their opinion. They voiced their desire to do it. So we already took it to the people. Hmm, you want to take it for the second time? Because you hope that something comes out? That is, that is, that is what is driving this, this situation, not us. You guys did not want to do that before. Now, we took it to the people and now you want to, you want to take it again in hopes of what? You know, we're not, we're not trying to make the city pay more. We already did our work. We already went to the people and asked them, do you want to, do you want this? They said no. And you want to do, do you, do you want to send it again to the people? I don't see that reasoning. I don't see that because without respect, you guys are not going to do that effort. Hmm, because you guys are not walking, you guys are not calling people and, and, and bringing people who actually say in front of us, we want this five district. You haven't presented any evidence that all those people that you mentioned say that. None. You have not bring any evidence for that. We have fourteen hundred people. You know, because I could, I could, I could go on and on. We took it to the people and the people spoke. Now you guys want to take it again? We're not, we're not making the city pay that. You two guys are making the city pay that. Because you, you don't want to, you don't want to bend anything. You don't want to be flexible. You don't want to talk. You don't, if the things don't go your way, then we are divisive. We're not being divisive. We expressed our opinion from the beginning and we worked with the people of solida for that referendum. You guys have that, have not done that. You talk about a lot of people talking to you. Where are those people? Where is the evidence? Hmm? So we're not, we're not taking the city to that, that point. You guys are taking the city to that point. We already did our work. We already talked to people. We already spent almost twenty, almost thirty days. Hmm, I had to work and then I had to come back and visit the people and explain in detail. Not in our favor, but what, what it was supposed to be, providing true information. That is the truth. Present the evidence that you have done the same and we're willing to do it, but present the evidence. You know, because what I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting is, if we repeal, it's going to be the same thing all over again. We're going to have to come out with some way to do it. And we, we're not, we're not, if we, if you repeal right now, you will also have the opportunity to present your, your evidence. And if you win, then if you, if you do it, then we can go our way if you, if you have those evidence. But it's so simple today, just repeal and start all over again.
I mean, thank you. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just, um, yeah, I just, you know, for me, just clarity and continued misinformation. Uh, we're not to be held accountable for the city expending money and I want to make that clear to the residents. Um, because we asked for a four district map and that's what we heard over and over. And you all adopted the five district map without the consent of the majority of the people of, of the city of Solidad that came and spoke. So I just want to make that clear because I'm not going to be held accountable, nor I'm going to allow for um, this count, you know, members of this council to say that we are, um, we are the problem, that we are incurring the city cost. We're here tonight because we're asking to um, to repeal the ordinance seven sixty-five in its entirety because we don't have any new information, Councilwoman Corralejo. The information that we have is the same that we've been seeing consistently throughout this whole process. And that's when we had seventy plus people in the chambers, you know, us saying the same thing over and over again. So, you know, I don't think it's new information. It's the same information with the fact that now, thank God, you know, we're not going to have to incur costs. But the principle is still the same. You voted against, you voted for something that the residents had said they didn't want. And so I, I'm going to go back and ask that we repeal ordinance seven sixty-five in its entirety. That's what we've heard from the beginning. And, you know, it's been consistent and hasn't been new information. And so I, I'm requesting again, I don't know, Mike, how we, I mean, how many motions we can continue to make or not, but um, I, I, you know, I, I make a motion to repeal ordinance seven sixty-five in its entirety and be consistent with what we've heard from our residents time after time. I'm not going to take.
Motion, we got a motion on the floor in a second. Welcome.
Chair Anna Velazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Benjamin Junior.
No.
Councilmember Maria Farrelho.
No.
Councilmember Fernando.
Yes.
Through the, through the chair, thanks to make some comments as a city manager.
Sure.
Um, so I feel like we've gotten to a place of impasse. Um, and there are many paths that led us to this, to this place. Um, right now, as I understand it, and Mike could correct me, that the decision, we are trying to move forward with the referendum, which was brought to us. And there are two decisions to move forward with the referendum, which I assumed their assumption was it was going to be placed on a ballot or to repeal, repeal the ordinance. Um, circumstances have also changed in that we have a council member who um, resigned. So we are going to be having to have a special election um, that this council um, did decide to, to send to special election in March. And so that's where the, the opportunity um, is to, to consolidate the election, which I think will, will be better in terms of cost savings, but probably helpful for the, the voting public as well. Um, I definitely understand that um, right now, we are at a strong impasse. Um, unfortunately, I don't think anyone is to blame. It's how we've gotten here. It's, you know, we have, we've, the, the council, um, at one point, we had five council members. Now we're down to, to four. We had five. There would have been a decision either way, but now we're, we're at a two-two. So I'm just hoping that someone has the political courage. I know it's challenging and people feel very firm on how things have gone, but have the political courage to um, make a decision that may feel wrong because you felt like this process didn't go right for you. Um, but to get us beyond this impasse, because I think the real uh, loss loss is going to be for the city as a whole. And again, I don't think anyone is to blame. Uh, we got here as we got here, but now we are here. And so Mike and I really um, are um, urging someone to, to step up and think maybe differently. Um, if we can't reach that, then we are going to be in a pickle moving forward. And I think um, we'd lead up the, the rest um, of the, of the city. And it's not to, to try to back anyone up into the corner. Um, it's just so that we, we can move forward. Like I said, if we didn't, if we had a four, five uh, member uh, group, we would have had a decision, but now we're um, we're at a two-two split. So however that looks like, um, again, I just urge that maybe someone would step up and maybe it's, it's not what you like. But I know that at the end of the day, the referendum was about putting this on the ballot. Um, so that, that's my comment.
All right, thank you. Um, again, we'll open the table up. Um, any further motions, any further discussion? I mean, I think the discussion has pretty much gone its route. Um, do we have any additional motions? Think I'll go ahead and make a motion that will go ahead and place the the item seven six five on the ballot for March fifth to combine it, um. A reconsideration. Yeah, motion in a second. Welcome.
Mayor Anna Velazquez.
No.
Mayor Proton Benjamin Junior.
Yes.
Councilmember Maria Farrelho.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernando.
No. I think we, uh, thank you, council, we're at an impasse. So moving on. Um, and that's a very change of, um, those votes might be available for a special meeting on the eighth, I don't know, but if, uh, you know, um, if any changes come up, you know, I think, Chair, I would be open to reconsidering at that point in time. But personally, tonight, we uh, currently aren't in, in path. So therefore, we're going to move into council announcements and reports. And we'll start with the council member cover.
Hold on. I, um, well, just forced, I'm sorry, I got, um, yes, um, I haven't been able to attend the solid, his uh, historical flag, I think, is next week. I'm going to contact them tomorrow and see if, if they change that meeting again. Uh, for the uh, Salinas broadband authority, I don't, I don't, how do you, how do you get here? Can I, can I get a contact, a contact information? For the uh, South Salinas broadband authority? That's what I can, so I know. I believe they're me totally, so. Okay, thank you. And then for Tamsi, I went today. We had a meeting at nine. Uh, today it was two and a half long meeting. Uh, the main item was to um, talking about a grant. The MSD and Tamsi will gather. Uh, they were, um, a discussion about uh, doing fifty fifty percent. So we're talking about five point, five point one billion dollars. And I personally, after reading all that information, I, I personally believe that uh, the items in which uh, Tamsi is working right now is mostly planning. So I feel, I feel like um, the uh, MSD needed a little bit more money to keep uh, the, the program running. But um, the, it passed after that. I think I was one of the few who said no opposed. And that's pretty much what I have. I, uh, and I attended the uh, Christmas parade. And I was able to press the button for the light and distribute uh, candies to the kids. That was an amazing time. A lot more people in the uh, in the area and a lot more participants in that parade. That's, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Uh, council member Correlho?
Um, yes, I just have a couple of them. I, I attended on the twenty-seventh, I believe, on the Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Committee, um, along with, with our mayor. And I'm glad to say that we had some very, very good um, projects coming that will offer affordable housing to our community. So that's, there's definitely a need for that. So that's something that I'm uh, looking forward to when it comes up to, to the council uh, for discussion and approval. And also on the thirtieth, had a meeting with um, businesses and also with um, Elizabeth Aguilar and um, I believe some of our Sun Street uh, Center and Partners for Peace. Um, uh, groups and we discussed um, youth, uh, I guess, opportunities to mentor, just like we heard today, to mentor, be able to offer internships and also possibly pay positions um, to, to our youth. Um, and then I unfortunately did not make the parade. I was out of the state, but I did hear that um, and saw pictures that on Facebook, that it was very well attended and looked like a very great time. And so I just wanted to thank the organizers um, for that.
All right, thank you. And I'll do my uh, real, real brief, uh, my agenda. So it's really solid waste authority on the sixteenth, uh, conducted the, the evaluation of Patrick of uh, um, um, the CEO of the organization. We've completed that. We'll be attending on the December fifteenth. It's going to be a happy day. Um, our goal setting and uh, uh, for the organization, this will be my third year of participating in that with goal setting. And each year, the priorities change every year. So I, I can't emphasize um, as much as I do how important that is. Uh, I can, the importance of that is because of the fact that it helps staff crystallize, it helps uh, the board crystallize, um, what we want to see accomplished uh, over that period of time. So in, you know, short term, long term type of situation. So um, that, that, that was the meeting that I attended. And tomorrow I attend the executive meeting for the Sinus Valley City authorities. That's all I have. Mayor, floor chart. Yeah.
Mayor, you, you.
On the sixteenth of November, I met with Megan, um, just to talk about uh, you know, items that were pressing for the city. On the twenty-seventh, uh, we had the Lafco special meeting, um, and it was a, a workshop on the ag mitigation. Um, there was obviously, it's on, it's an ongoing. Um, it was ongoing discussions in terms of ag mitigation and how that really impacts our Salinas Valley cities. And obviously, um, one of the annexations that we have before us is part of the city of Solidad. On the twenty-seventh, um, as Councilwoman Corralejo stated, we met um, as part of the Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Subcommittee, um, there was two projects that were brought before us. So for me, it's, um, I had some questions on some of those projects just to make sure that there was consistency on how we can maintain affordability for some of those, as some are not coming with um, subsidies that traditionally um, restrict affordability for a certain amount of years. Uh, but we are excited to, to share hopefully at the next couple of, of, the next meeting coming up, um, some of these projects that are going to come before the council for approval that will uh, give us the opportunity to really increase our affordable housing um, units and um, meet our arena numbers. And then also on the um, December the twenty, uh, November twenty-ninth through December first, I was at the Cal Cities, California League of Cities, the League Leaders Workshop and Board Meeting. So as you know, I'm on the Cal Cities Board and with. I'm on the Cal Cities Board. And with that comes a lot of information um is is what I shared, some of that with you tonight. They gave us updates in regards to um the political outlook for twenty twenty-four. And some of you may have already heard that there is a state, the state is is in a deficit, is projecting a twenty-four billion dollar deficit. It might get bigger. Um but that outlook is also possible for twenty twenty-five. So we'll, you know, it's important for us to again, looking at our funding sources, um that we're limited as cities as well, but the state will be facing some of those budget um deficits. And then um we adopted as the California League of Cities, that represents all the cities, represents part of the city of Solidad as well, our priorities for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So just really quickly, I just want to share with you what those are because they're consistent too with what some of uh the discussions we've had as a council. But safeguarding our local revenues, obviously, that's really critical to all the cities. Strengthening the climate change, resiliency and disaster preparedness. Um improving public safety, which was a big discussion um during this uh conversation with the league leaders. And expanding investment to prevent and reduce homelessness and increase the supply of affordable housing. The other big item, and I think Megan has shared with you some information, and I think it's going to be imperative for us as council um to really be aware of this, but that's the um the CBRT, which is a roundtable, this the the business roundtable that has um an initiative that they're going to be putting on the ballot. And it really jeopardizes the funding for our local um services and revenues. So that's going to be really important um for us to be aware of what's coming. So the league has done a lot of information. They're really making sure that us as elected officials are aware um of what's happening and what we can do um to prevent some of that from moving forward as part of the ballot initiative. Um and I think that's oh, on December second as well, I attended the Christmas parade. So just thank you to all of our city staff that participated and um to the organizers that made this happen impossible for, I think it's thirty-third, thirty-seventh annual Christmas parade. So it was so well attended. There was, I think this was the first time I see this, just so many, so many families, which was really nice to see. Um and then on December the fourth, I attended another LaFco workshop in regards to ag mitigation. So we had an opportunity to really look at the policies and some of the issues that uh, you know, obviously Megan has been sharing as well, has been in regards to timing and the ratios of the ag mitigation. So the board was able to go through some of those policy items and make some recommendations. And hopefully, we can see uh we can see some of that moving forward in the next couple of months. That's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving into council praises. Anybody have any praises at this time, or would you want to go around the table?
Hi.
We'll start for level.
Okay, thank you. Um yes, again, I I think this is um you know, honestly, the best, the best part of the agenda for me, um especially in in difficult meetings like today. Um to give council praises, um and there's always so many to give. So to me, first, I want to start off by thanking um those that uh applied for the planning commission position. So I want to thank um Lorenzo and and also, of course, welcome him. Also, um Mr. Nickerson and Roger Badientos. I hope I got that name right. I'm just wanted to thank everybody for for that, uh making themselves available to serve their community. And then also, I wanted to um thank someone else, and I'm not sure if he's still here or not, um Red West White. Not, I don't see him. I think he's coming in. Um so I just wanted to um give present praises to West White because this is the second or third meeting that I have came to. The first um city of uh Solidad meeting. Um but I just really wanted to to thank him for volunteering. He volunteers, obviously, his his equipment and his time. Um and you know, he does all this just to offer a a service to his community and not just Solidad, but his community and I want to say the whole county. Um and he goes to public meetings, he videos these meetings, and he does it um just, you know, to um to hope, to help with transparency. Um and I just, you know, again, wanted to to thank him. I'm sure there's a million things he could do with his time, but he chooses to to come and record on public meetings. So thank you.
Council member. Um I just have one. I want to praise uh Eva and Yandelus for and all the team that organized and the city staff and city manager for a beautiful, wonderful um parade and and the people of Solidad for enjoying that. So thank you so much for all the work that you guys do. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um yeah, I echo I echo um Councilwoman Corvett. I want to thank Eva uh for all the work that she's done, not just on the parade, but everything that she's done throughout the years with our city. And the parade is a big one, a big one, because when I reflected, it's thirty-seven years. I mean, it's not like she just got involved a year or two years ago. I mean, they, she's been doing this for a long time. And the parade is very instrumental also for our families. And you see that, you really saw that. It was super evident um on on Saturday. There was just so many more people than I've seen in the past. So thank you for making that happen. Um and for all of, you know, the the staff that worked on that. I also want to thank um our police department, because I know that uh Chief, if you've been uh, if you've been seeing their posts, they've been able to get um different grants, and they're being actively pursuing other grants that are available. So I just want to you know, shout out to Chief and all of his team for uh making sure that we're accessing the resources that are available to the cities and really buying for that money at the state and federal level. And then my last one is, I just want to say thank you to Megan as our city manager. I know she came in, and it's been a kind of tumultuous time and a lot of turmoil. Um but she's been able to um, you know, really address a lot of issues and move forward with things and really keep us into perspective. But I also want to say that I, you know, a- as as many of you know, um she has a lo- a lot of background on homelessness and housing. And I know for me, you know, we continue to see people that are homeless in our community and not just those that are in our um riverbed, but also those families that are living in um, living in in their cars. Um and it's really unfortunate to see. So I um unfortunately um got a call from an individual that wanted to assist some of our homeless families that were living in in the cars. And it was, you know, pretty, as a mom of three boys, um or just as a mom in general, um it really, it really breaks my heart, especially when we have um children involved. And I just want to say, you know, I called Megan, shared with her what was going on. And she already had been talking to the family. She already had, you know, connected them with different resources. She was already looking into what was available and and to the point that we've talked, you know, I know we've said this before, but you know, shelter and and the South County area is so needed. There's so many families that needed at least that emergency shelter to get them through a couple of nights um until they find the housing that they need. So it's something that I know for me, it's just a, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh yeah, for myself, again, um you know, Christmas parade, I mean, that's a staple in this community. I think in most communities, just being able to get together and enjoy each other's company and celebrate, you know, the the year coming to an end and also, you know, um Christmas coming, coming up. But most importantly is the volunteers. Um again, Pauline and Eva and um, you know, does a heck of a job. Um it's taken for granted at times that it's just going to happen. Well, you know, unfortunately, it's not always just going to happen. You saw that with the solid yesterday's and those other other events that, you know, people get burned out eventually. And so volunteering, so we gotta as a staff work together or as a a council, working with our staff, to try to do some event uh planning. And I know um I've talked to Megan about this as well, getting that on the, on the schedule so we can start doing that. Um you know, the the chief and the officers for outstanding job we did uh with the event. Um and then also the the other two individuals that applied for uh the planning commission. Thank you so much for being patient and hanging in there. Um one thing, I know darling's been on me about my my appointment to the S committee, and I'd like to, and I don't know if it's appropriate now, and correct me if I'm wrong, everybody yelling me, but uh Phil Nickerson to the uh my S committee, so that way it's a lot. I I didn't want to say that until after he was considered for the planning commission. And once he wasn't, um you know, he wants to be involved. And and uh he's a, I know, good, good guy. So um and he's uh already volunteering to our community as it is. So um those are all that I have. All right, so moving on to uh
So Mayor, Mayor, so Pro Tem Mayor, just a point of order on that. So if you want to make a recommendation the because we can't make it tonight, can I come back, Megan, on the thirteenth or um for that? Because we can't do it tonight. It's not agendized.
Yeah, it's not a recommendation. It's just uh he gets to appoint somebody, but let, we can, we'll put it on the thirteen.
We, we were going to put your appointment on as well.
Okay.
We have an application from the youth. So.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, city managers or uh city manager report.
Sure, um I'll make it real quick. I also wanted to thank uh Eva and Pauline. Um Pauline is quite the amazing um woman at the I don't want to say her age, but she's in her eighties. Um and uh she's just uh, you know, a ball of energy um has been leading both the Christmas effort and the Fourth of July effort for years. And um you know, I, it it's really great that um she continues to be active in the community. I also wanted to acknowledge, in addition to Chief Lawson in the Police Department, who did an outstanding job, is um also acknowledged Chief Lukemback, who brought in a a lot of cool uh fire equipment in addition to just having the um fire uh uh leave Santa Claus. And then I also wanted to acknowledge Andrea Navarrete and um Tensia Vargas, who also uh worked very closely um with Public Works. And I also wanted to acknowledge Joelle and Gilbert, who did, along with the whole Public Works team, who did an outstanding job of decorating. It was uh definitely a team effort. And uh those four were really instrumental in in leading that. Um just to note that we um do have holiday banners up. Um I hope it's the beginning of a banner program for Front Street. Um we are encouraging the public to shop local. And if you can't shop locally, can't find what you need to here, shop online, because we still do get tax dollars if you if you shop online. Our preference, of course, is to support our local businesses um here. Um I wanted to uh let um council know, I sent a letter to LaFco regarding kind of the experience with Maramonte and asking for flexibility about ag mitigation. I will send you that letter um on Friday. Um we also um got support from the Homeless Committee from Monterey County to apply um for an encampment resolution grant for our Solidad um Salinas River Encampment. So we're looking to work with the county on real solutions, um not just cleaning up the area, but um I think uh Wes brought up uh services and housing. Um I'm pleased to say uh we have offers on the table um and looks like acceptance for agreed positions for community and economic development. Um we did um temporarily shift um one of the co- community engagement staff to work with at department um because of all of the engagement going on around the um economic development um or the general plan and housing element. But also, we really wanted to step up events. That was something I think that the council um is really interested in and trying to activate um Solidad in the downtown. Um we also have our housing person. So I'm glad that we're going to be um having a housing person totally focused to allow Tensia to focus on economic development and our community um director uh and community and economic development director. So um I will be uh giving you more information about these people and doing some introductions. And um I'm very excited about that. And then to uh lastly, uh Cookies with Santa event um on the sixteenth um uh Saturday, uh the Pinnacles event. Uh Cookies with Santa will start at six. We have a great announcement at six-thirty. Hopefully, you can come. Uh and then we'll have uh the Pinnacles uh on the night. Um the event from, I think it's from ten to two. And then lastly, um we're hoping to launch this week the capital, the official kickoff for the capital campaign for the community center. Um we have about two point four million dollars of improvements that are needed to bring up the community center, including um lots of ADA um improvements. The council has given a big chunk of money through ARPA to kickstart it. Um but we are going to be looking for big and small donations. So um we hope to be as successful as Gonzalez has been in um getting uh commitments to their new new community center. So I I look forward to um having that kickoff. Thank you.
All right, any uh future? Saying there's no future item?
I'm to the chair, I I don't, it's not necessarily a future um item, so please let me know if it's appropriate or not to bring up. But I I have seen the effort on, you know, supporting uh local business, and I think it's great. Um and I I did want to just go along with ordering online. I know that on Amazon, um you can choose a local charity, a local nonprofit. And if you order on Amazon, um and I don't mean to you know, but um I think most of us do order on Amazon, and they will give a certain percentage to to those nonprofits, local nonprofits. And there's actually a lot of them, you know, that I have seen on there. I know there's some that I personally um support. And I just wanted to encourage um our community to to, you know, do the same if if you so wish. And and to support, we're going to shop anyways. Doesn't cost anything extra, and you're supporting a good cause.
Um and I did have one question for for council. Um we are having a special meeting on December thirteenth, and I know it's pretty close to the holidays, so we come today. Um I did put um the traffic safety um discussion on the agenda for a presentation, but then I realized that it is a special meeting and you wanted to keep, keep it somewhat light. So my question is, do you want to? I know it's very important, because we've had a lot of accidents. We can keep it on December thirteenth, or we can shift it to January seventeenth. I wanted to be responsive, but to see what your preference would be.
Counsel, so are we, we're not having on the twentieth, but.
No, we we weren't going to have the forum, so that's why we moved it to the thirteenth.
Yeah, I recommend we, we, I recommend, sorry, I recommend that we um keep it, that we put it, we leave it there, Megan. I know that it has been an issue. I know that we um heard from our residents in terms of some of the concerns regarding that. So um the holidays are coming, there's going to be more traffic. So I think the more that we can look at what the options are uh before the holidays, that'll be great. That's my recommendation.
I just had a couple of questions. Um first of all, um if if we I guess, is there any any deadlines or, you know, that are any decisions we have to make as a council, or it's just informative?
Um I think it's more to um inform you and the public about what is happening in the background in terms of the work that the police department is doing with Public Works and some of the um work that they're doing in terms of looking at um traffic warrants and some of the problem spots.
Yeah, so it's not going to impair any any current effort or stay on. Obviously, I'm sure that that's one of our chief's main efforts is to continually deal and improve.
Oh, yeah, it wa- it's not, it's not time sensitive, um except that I know that there has been some concerns that have been expressed by the public.
Yeah, and I know I, we spoke about this yesterday, so it's been a concern of mine as well.
So if if um the consensus is to leave it on the thirteenth, then you can.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now any other future or future items, agenda items? No? The word? No, no, go ahead, any mayor?
No.
The only thing I have is, you know, if we get staff uh and and other things coming up with the the homeless, the um um addressing those issues, um one of the things that that is available and that we know that's there is uh the resource uh resource guide, the resource handout, that that we could provide to them in the meantime while we're developing um going through the process of uh addressing it in our city. Um working in Salinas, working in Salzay, uh very familiar with that, very familiar, truly familiar with shelters programs and all those things as well. But there is a resource. And so if we get staff to uh be able to provide that to them, and Chief, you're probably already doing that. And I don't, okay, so you're, so we don't need to see the future agenda. Yeah, you know, we're good? Okay, all right, so so much for this question.
Mayor Pro Tem, just just on that note. Mayor Pro Tem, just just on that note, just on that note, just so I can share, I know one of the things that we've been hearing, even though there's resources and we can hand them out. As much as we want. But I think one of the things that we know, especially on the shelters, all of the shelters um across the county are are on, they have like wait lists, right? So I think that's been one of the issues experiencing is that um there there are resources, but the resources are oversubscribed and not available. Um and that's a problem. So I know that just, you know, just to caution, because that's what I've encountered already.
And uh through the chair, I, we will be coming back either the seventeenth or the first meeting in February. Because um we're working, we'll be working with the county on the encampment resolution grant. And so I probably want to get authorization from you, you all that we can go ahead and submit, so.
All right, that's all I have. No other questions. Go ahead and adjourn the meeting at ten forty-eight.